Can you hear me, Jan?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, if you can hear me.
Yes.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, so Terry, Larry, Jan. Can you all change your name? You all say board member right now.
How do we change it again?
Um. On your. You should have three dots in the top right corner. You should have three dots or maybe down below.
Okay, rename. We, Larry Madden. There we go.
Thank you.
I misspelled my own name. Oh, mercy.
And then Bob, can you also change your name?
Yep, just did it for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning.
Morning, Ty. I guess we have this. That's muted. YouTube muted. Yep, this is live. This is running.
Hey, Ty, can you change your name for me, please?
I sure can.
How are you, Larry?
I'm well, thank you very much. How are you?
Good. A little frustrated with, uh, I'm trying to work two iPads at the one time and on the other one, it won't let me into the, uh, the verbiage, for lack of a better term. I want to have the camera on one and looking at what we're looking at on the other, so.
Understand. Technology's not my strong suit, that's for sure.
No, it's definitely not mine. How've you been?
I've been well, thank you. We're down here in sunny Florida playing Cousin Eddie in my brother-in-law's drive-in, or drive-thru driveway. And they are currently up in Yellowstone, enjoying snowboarding and skiing and one thing or another. That'll be back Monday, but the weather down here has been fabulous.
Wow, that's wonderful. It's, it's very, it's to be very warm here today, but it's really clouding up already, but it's like seventy-five up here in Virginia already.
Yes.
And then, uh, yeah, and then it's gonna like dip and, you know, kill all the flowers in terms of the trees that are budding, uh, by the weekend.
Well, in Buffalo, we got hit with an ice storm last night, so I'm running off generator on the house right now.
I tell you, you have had the winner.
Oh, we definitely have it. Now they're saying we're getting another snowstorm this afternoon, so this ought to be a lot of fun.
Well, you you have a good time. You're all dressed up for us.
Well, yes, I got cleaned up for us.
It looks good.
Clean up at times. Actually, forty miles from my house, it's fifty-five degrees right now.
Oh, my. That's crazy.
This weather has been insane.
Hey, everybody, just as a reminder, when you're coming on, can you please update your name since you use a generic, we're using a generic board member, change your name, and if you could add your region or, or role, uh, that would be fantastic. Now, so just so everybody's aware, this is streaming live to YouTube. Fred, I see Fred Keel. I see you as an attendee, so I think you used a different link, so I'm gonna have Barb promote you to a panelist. As a VP, you should be as a panelist. So look for a, um, invite coming across your screen. Thanks, Fred, and see ya.
Uh, good morning, everyone. Uh, we'll start in about, uh, four and a half minutes. Uh, thank you all for being prompt and thank all you, not necessarily just West Coast people, but those of you who enjoy your mornings. So I appreciate you coming in bright and early. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
As a reminder, everybody, if you could please update your name um to reflect who you are and the role you're playing. And also as a reminder, this is being streamed live to YouTube.
So I wouldn't exactly call this a funny story, but Laverne and I were supposed to be at a rally this weekend. We're gonna be doing this over our Starling connection. Uh, unfortunately, um, a big tree fell on our trailer, uh, yesterday or the day before, and so it is, uh, totally sort of wiped out. It's at the ushering dealership getting repairs. Uh, it's one of those freak, we had these freak windstorms here in California, and the trailer was parked in our storage facility where it's frankly been parked for fifteen years, the various ones, and, uh, on our way to do final packing, I go out there, it's like, hey, how come there's a tree leaning on our trailer? Um, so it was one of those things, um, but fortunately, it appears they'll have it resolved before we, uh, take our next long departure. Um, although I gotta say, some of people at our rally right now are thinking it was planned. Uh, I think, uh, it may snow down in the Bay Area where the rally was going to be. I think the high is like thirty-eight or forty today. The lows are in the high twenties, low thirties, and so we're actually sitting in our warm house and our friends are, I'm sure they're lost and we missed them, but it's just one of those random things. And it's just so ironic how many miles we've traveled across so many, uh, weather, uh, events to have uh, something that's happened in our own backyard, basically, in a, in a storage facility. But, you know, that's what insurance is for, so. Okay, uh, about a couple of minutes left to go then. By the way, uh, Justin Humphries is gonna be joining us this morning. Um, don't see him on yet. I'll be putting him in, uh, in my president's, uh, report section. Uh, he'll be giving an update. Oh, I see him coming in now. I'll be giving an update much like he does at international rallies.
Devil, there he is. Hey, Justin.
There he is.
Hello, everybody.
Good morning, Justin.
Good to see so many smiling faces.
Yes, I was just telling him that, uh, you know, our beautiful new thirty-foot classic that's a month and a half old, uh, succumbed to a tree branch falling on it two days ago. So Fairfield is, they got replaced the whole rear end, a branch punctured the solar panel and punctured the roof. There's like a one-inch by two-inch hole in the roof. Uh, this is one of those crazy things, but the team in Fairfield is working on it already. Laverne towed it down there because I was at a board meeting somewhere else and, uh, dropped it off yesterday and, you know, these things happen, so.
Uh, that's unfortunate. I'm sorry to hear that. At least it, uh, one of you, uh, didn't back it into the tree and then there would have been, uh, never lived that down.
Yeah, well, that is definitely true, and that's when you sort of hope it isn't me if that thing sorts of happens. All right, we are, we are ready to go.
Okay, um, real quick, Eric, everybody, if you could look at the name, your name and update your name, because it's a generic, um, panelized invitation that comes in for board members. So if you could please update your name, uh, that would be fantastic. And just as one last reminder, this is being, um, streamed live to YouTube. There you go, Eric.
Awesome. Okay, just a couple of things for the rest of the people who joined us. Um, uh, so first of all, I apologize for the very lengthy, uh, board packets. I think this is by far our longest. I think it's three hundred and forty-six pages. Um, we're learning with our board packet tool. The reason that packet is so long is that because we included a bunch of data from the survey. And, uh, once we realized a couple of days ago, sort of how it got stuck into the board packet, um, we're gonna take a different approach next time. Um, there's an ability within Board Impact to create what's called a attachment or a resource library. So the future will stick things like this in the resource library, which is separate from the online agenda, and that way you can go out and check out and come back. So apologize in advance. Uh, I know it makes it problematic, uh, to look through the agenda if you're trying to scroll through it, but if you hit the hyperlinks and jump to the, um, agenda topics, you can, uh, manage it, uh, well. Uh, the second thing is that, um, at the end of this meeting, uh, we're gonna go to a, just, uh, a closed session. Um, talking about some personnel issues, uh, some opportunities. As you guys all know, uh, Joanne is retiring, uh, from her position as well as Tom, our CBL chair. Um, at the end of this, this, uh, year, and we'll be talking about, um, uh, sort of how we look to, uh, get someone trained and, and, and ready to take on her role when she leaves. So that'll be a closed session. Lori will turn off the cameras and, uh, that will be, um, that should be sufficient in the recording. Yeah, we, we don't like to have, talk about personnel issues on live, uh, live stream, so, uh, especially when we talk about the candidate. Alrighty, so, um, this meeting will come to order. Uh, all cell phones, please silence. Um, please stay on mute, um, unless you are, you are speaking. Um, that helps to, this, uh, eliminate distractions. Um, the, one of the things we used to do, uh, prior, which I let slip, was talk about the rules of the meeting, the rules of the day. And the important part of this for all of you all is that I want to make sure that with such a large agenda, we have enough time to go through it, and so I'm just gonna go through this again. This should be familiar to many of you. Um, basically, any member can speak during a meeting. Um, these are the members, not board members. Um, I don't believe we had any comments come in yet, Lori, but if so, um, shall let me know. Um, all speakers must give their name in their office, and we try to reinforce this because even if someone knows who Matt Hackney is, it may not know that Matt Hackney is the Treasurer of International Treasurer. Um, remarks are limited to three minutes, um, by speakers. That's, uh, usually not, not a problem. Um, usually the comments are somewhat small by, by y'all. Uh, but the important thing is that, um, I want to make sure that, uh, we, uh, stay to twenty minutes discussion topic for any topic. You know, we have had in the past some very lengthy discussions, which are, you know, interesting, but we're gonna limit it to twenty minutes per, per discussion topic unless the board agrees to continue longer. So, um, with that, um, oh, also, speakers may speak more than once, but as in past meetings, if a speaker has already spoken once, then I will take the, uh, um, direction of, of make sure everyone has a chance to speak at least once before someone comes around again. All right, so based on that, those are the proposed, uh, meetings, um, rules of the meeting. Are there any objections to the proposed rules of the meeting? And by the way, I'm gonna pause long enough such that people have time to find those, uh, mute buttons or raise hand buttons. So if anyone has any objections to the, uh, rules of the meeting, please, uh, I saw a hand fly up. Christine, I think your hand was flying somewhere else, or was it? Okay, I'm gonna guess that's all right. Here are no objections. Uh, those are the rules for the, for the meeting. Okay, next, um, Terry Warren, our, uh, secretary, um, would you, uh, do the roll call, please?
Yes, and I have one quick question. You said we're gonna limit topics to twenty minutes, and usually we have timers when we do this, or we did when we had it in person. Do, do you want me to time or?
That'd be fine, thank you.
I'll, I'll try to do that and do that. Okay. Uh, President Eric McHenry.
Present.
Vice President, First Vice President, Pear Hamquist.
Present.
Executive Council Member, Karen Fisher.
Present.
Executive Council Member, Millie O'Donnell.
I'm here.
I'm here as well. Uh, International Treasurer, Matt Hackney.
Present.
Immediate Past President, Ty Mott.
Present.
Region One President, Bart Fuller.
Present.
Region Two President, RJ Marquette.
Present.
Region Three President, Christine Baum.
Present.
Region Four President, Brad Briggs.
Present.
Region Five President, Artie Martin.
Present.
Region Six President, Larry Madden.
Present.
Region Seven President, Ginger Slattery.
Present.
Region Eight President, Greg Badner.
Present.
Region Nine President, Nancy Fitzgerald.
Present.
Region Ten President, Kathy Giese.
Present.
Region Eleven President, Stephen Parr. Is Stephen Parr with us today? I will mark him as absent.
I'll see him.
He might join later. We'll see. Uh, Region Twelve President, Laverne McHenry.
Present.
Parliamentarian, Joanne Miller.
Present.
Corporate Manager, Lori Plummer.
Present.
And what a fun thing. I can say trustee Justin Humphries, and he's here.
Present.
Great. We have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Terry. Can you see if we have a representative from Region Eleven, uh, that's replacing the Region Eleven President?
Do we have a person from Region Eleven to replace the president?
If Stephen Parr doesn't show up, you have a representative from Region Eleven.
John, is that you?
Yes, it is.
So, Mr. President, I'm not, I don't remember how we do this because we haven't done it in a little while.
Uh, John Holly will represent Region Eleven, um, until or if, uh, uh, the president steps in. So thanks, John.
That was easy. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. We have a quorum, and we're fine to proceed. Uh, just, okay, now, minutes, please, Terry? Rule of minutes.
Are there any questions, uh, or concerns, corrections to the minutes of eleven seventeen twenty-two? If not, we will consider the minutes approved. With no objections, the minutes will be approved.
All right, thanks, Terry. Um, and next, three dot two, uh, you know, we, we've done a couple of electronic, uh, voting. I want to thank the board for being patient as we work through the process, both of voting and of notification, and we're working on that. Um, but, uh, one thing Terry's gonna do now is, you know, his secretary is to, uh, just share with you the results of it. Um, we're not gonna go through detail, but Terry's talking about the results of election and how people, sorry, the motions and how people can see how they got resolved.
Terry, you're muted.
Sorry, um, those, uh, that report is in your, um, let's see if I can. So we have snow this morning and not everything, we have a lot of snow this morning and not everything is working on my end. Those, uh, are in the, um, your minutes, and I will go over them now. Um, the results of the electronic votes since we last met. Motion, uh, from Larry Madden, the Music City Airstream Club to approve their flag was approved. Uh, fourteen approved, no denied, no abstained. Next was the motion from Artie Martin, uh, to change the name from W B C C I Illinois Link- Lincolnland Airstream Club to just Illinois Lincolnland Airstream Club. That was approved by fourteen, denied by none, and abstained by none. And then there was another motion from Marty Martin to adopt a flag for the Kentucky Airstream Club. They've never had a flag, and that was approved, sixteen denied, zero and abstained, zero. So those are the results of, uh, of our of our, uh, electronic voting since we last met. And I just got a note from Lori Plummer that Stephen Parr is having internet issues and will join as soon as possible. Thank you.
Terry, let me, um, Larry, I see your hand up. Larry Madden, Region Six.
Yeah, I'd also placed another motion for the Pensacola Club for a, um, new insignia. And it was put through the process. I had to correct it once, uh, uh, I, I made the correction and sent it back in. Joanne had pointed out a, something I've done procedurally incorrect, and I'd resubmitted it, and this is, uh, even before the, uh, Tennessee motion was presented. Have you, have you seen it or has it gotten lost somewhere?
Actually, I believe that, um, was ending on, the voting for that one was just ending this past Monday, so that's why it's not in the meeting.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you very much.
I will report it next time.
Thank you.
We'll let you know, Larry, as it cycles through.
And one of the process things that we've identified is that, um, again, this is new for us as a club, and I appreciate your guys' patience as we work it through, is that once the voting has com- completed, uh, the National Secretary will inform the National President, and the National President, uh, will inform the motion maker and the affected club of, say, hey, congratulations, your flag, your motion has been approved, your flag has been passed, and that'll happen within probably less than three or four days. So sorry, Larry, in the last one, um, but we'll get it worked out right, um, this next time, hopefully. All right, thank you, uh, Terry. Anything else from, from your side?
Nothing else from my side. Thank you.
Okay, officer reports. I'm gonna give a couple of real brief ones, and I'm gonna, uh, cede my time, uh, to Justin. First of all, uh, I included, well, for President's Report, y'all can read it, I'm sure, in there. Uh, we're really excited about the strategy session, uh, coming up in May. Uh, I just had to clarify to y'all and through another email that this is just for the region presidents or their replacement if they're not able to attend, and that's due to space limitations plus the reality of trying to have two to three days of interactive discussions with twenty people in a room. It's just hard to do for more people than that. Um, we'll talk later about the parliamentarian process. Uh, I think Christine may talk about this a little bit later, but there's been an interest club-wide of, uh, developing a messaging app for use within recommending a mess- messaging app for use within activities. Laverne and I just spent, uh, a wonderful month with the Arkansas Razorbacks, and they happen to use Slack. I know that some parts of Region Three use WhatsApp, and, uh, I've chartered and asked Mark Niedem, who leads Information Technology Committee, to look at some of the various options. There's a couple other ones, too, to see out, see if there's one we can recommend. Uh, you don't have to use it, but that way, if you do choose one of the recommended ones, your folks will have support from the Information Technology Committee on how to set this up. I know Bob Hoffman agreed to work on it. I saw you on here somewhere, Bob. Thank you. Um, Bob's got a lot of experience using, uh, WhatsApp, uh, within Region Three and his clubs, too. So whether it's WhatsApp or Facebook or whatever, Slack, uh, we hope to have a recommendation, uh, for you. And to give you a sense of what this is all about, you know, rallies are happening, things are happening, and it's really nice to be able to get an update that said, hey, by the way, here's some photos that we took and add it to your photo library if you want to. Um, hey, we're gonna meet for happy hour. We're gonna go take a bus someplace, take a look at something. So it's something to, you can put in your toolkit. And again, I think Christine will talk about it. I believe they're gonna use it in her upcoming Region, uh, Three Rally also. Another thing is that John Becker, as I shared, um, is gonna be giving a caravan webinar. That's really exciting. We've got a lot of strong feedback, uh, on the Campfire Chats, the membership webinars, and from looking at our survey results, you've probably noticed that caravans are a huge thing that our members are interested in, um, be they short or medium or long. And John's gonna bring on with one of his caravan staff, uh, caravan leaders to talk about the caravan process and what's happening, and it'll be open for all members. And Lori, I believe you guys are targeting that for April sometime, I think. Not sure, but, um, that's probably close enough. Our next Campfire Chat is on March eighth. The next thing that I included in my President's Report, um, I, we, we did it. So in February, February, in February, there was no printed blue beret because we used the February edition of the blue beret for the membership edition, the printed membership edition. And so we wanted to try a test of all digital, um, President's message as opposed to doing nothing. Typically, there's no President's message in February at all. I sent one out. I got some feedback. You can take a look at the feedback yourself, uh, generally very positive. I think we're gonna continue, um, having, uh, electronic Presidents' Reports or Presidents' Corners go out in parallel. So I did include in the, um, my stack, uh, what the March twenty twenty-three President's Corner is going to look like for two reasons. One is I wanted the board to see sort of what I'm sharing with the members with respect to the survey. There's some interesting things in there. I tried to distill a couple of key points out of the membership survey in terms of what types of rallies people want to go to, what activities they like. I wanted you to see it. So there's some graphs in there that, take a look at it. That data will, uh, be shared with our members on March first as part of the March first, uh, blue beret, but I wanted you all to take a look at it first. Lori will go into more detail later on some of the, uh, on some of the, uh, membership survey stuff. That's about it for me. I'm gonna hand it over to Justin. You know, it's, it's really cool, actually. You know, at our international rallies, and one of the things that our members flock to is hearing more about Airstream, and Justin has a lively presentation as always. He's gonna spend about ten to fifteen minutes just talking about the industry and Airstreaming. All right, thanks, Justin.
Thanks, Eric, and, uh, thanks for, uh, having me this morning. Um, always good to see everybody and, uh, and I enjoy those presentations at the international rally as well. Do have a few things I want to just cover, give you a little inside baseball on what's going on in the RV industry and particularly what's going on with, with Airstream. Um, but, but first off, I'm super excited that, uh, we're gonna be hosting an IBT meeting this May in our new board, um, room here at Airstream, and I cannot wait for the members to see this new facility. It, uh, as you know, we opened this up January twenty twenty, then the world changed about two months, three months later, and we haven't been able to show this new facility off. But it is, uh, the largest investment in the history of the RV industry for one facility, all manufacturers in North America. So if you really think about that and kind of let that sink in, um, it's pretty exciting, and it's really a testament to, uh, our customers' support of us because we could have never done that without each of you, uh, without our dealer's support. Um, really, uh, really, uh, uh, just awesome, awesome, uh, new factory here. So a lot, lots to show when everybody comes in town, so we're excited about that, Eric, and thanks for helping us, uh, set that up. Um, so a couple, let me start with the market. Actually, there is a lot of noise in the market. You know, when you look at the rest of the RV industry, I'm gonna take Airstream out. We're just gonna look at the RV business. Most of the manufacturers over in Indiana are really assembling pieces. You know, they don't, they're not really fully integrated like Airstream is, where we fabricate our, our metal, where we build our own cabinets from beginning to end. And, um, the reason I say that is because they can, they can, uh, ramp up really quick. They can scale really quick. If they get all those parts in, they can assemble an RV very, very quickly. For us, uh, we have true artisans. You know, it takes three months just to get somebody up to speed, and, um, because of how we build them, we, we just, we don't ramp up nearly as fast. So what happened is when, uh, COVID hit, everybody ramped up and, um, retails were phenomenal in twenty twenty-one. It was an all-time record year in the RV business. In twenty twenty-two, things kind of came back down a little bit, but the RV manufacturers kept building at the twenty twenty-one retail rates. And, um, what ended up happening is these RV dealers, again, this is not Airstream, this is the RV industry. These, uh, these dealers got overstocked last year by, uh, huge factor. So they stopped ordering, and then manufacturers, uh, had to stop building. So from about the beginning of December until recently, a lot of factories in Indiana completely shut down, and they stopped building. They had had some finished goods in their yard that they were able to supply the dealers, but they, um, they really stopped producing new units to try to right-size dealer inventories. So there is some noise, and if you go out and look at some of these RV dealers, there's a lot of, we affectionately refer to them as white boxes. We don't mean that, um, disrespectfully, but there's a sea of white boxes on a lot of dealers' lots. So, um, we've been watching that, and, uh, we are not in the same position. You know, we really manage our dealer inventory, so we, we work with our dealers. We know exactly how many they want in stock, and we actually revisit that four times a year because that will ebb and flow depending and we actually revisit that four times a year because that will ebb and flow depending on the market demands and then we build under that. We don't wanna build over that and get in a situation where we could have to shut down our factory or take time off because families are impacted by that. So we're, we take that very seriously. We don't like the ups and downs of manufacturing. We have not taken any time down over the same period. Every year we shut down for the holidays. Um this year was no different. We did have to shut down two days because of weather, but outside of that, we haven't had to take any downtime. Now, we are um adjusting the the production knobs behind the scenes of reducing maybe a little bit of this model and producing more of that model and moving people around. Um but that's just good business. So we've uh we've really managed it well and um so we're uh we're, you know, we're knocking on wood. We're very thankful that, you know, we weren't in the position those other manufacturers were, but um because of what they did, I think they mismanaged it. If you look at the retails of twenty twenty-two, it's gonna be like a top five years. So there was a self-inflicted wound on their end to be building at twenty twenty-one retails, um but retailing at twenty twenty-two levels. So um I think it's uh, there's plenty of business. It's good business. They just have to right-size their ship. So you might see some of that noise out in the marketplace and press releases from some of these manufacturers, stock prices going up and down, and that's a little bit inside baseball for the industry, what's going on with the rest of the industry. And then in in terms of Airstream, you know, we're still, we look at our uh so back to the Airstream model, when we look at what our dealers want in inventory, we're about half of what they want. So we still haven't caught up. You know, from uh May of twenty twenty to August of twenty twenty, every single unit in North America was sold. We became the toilet paper of of the COVID era where everybody wanted to go out and buy a new RV and Airstream is no different. They're still catching up from that. Some products are a little closer, you know, base camp, we can make more of the stuff. Um we're pretty close on base camp motorhomes. Um yeah, we don't build the entire shell of a of a Sprinter or this new Dodge Ram. So that's a lot of production we don't have to worry about. Our partners build that. We just have to upfit them. So we can we can scale that up a little bit better. Our iconic, our iconic travel trailers, that's the biggest thing because we make, that's that's the toughest to ramp up. So that one, we're still the farthest behind. But you know, we have models like Pottery Barn and Classics and in some cases are still over a year out on a new order. Um so we have uh, uh we're in a, we're in a good spot. We're we're comfortable with where we are and we're actually increasing production by about five units a week um next month. Try to um build some of those Potter Barns and Classics for these customers that have been waiting so long. So so we're excited where we are. So I would say there's noise in the market. Um Airstream's uh doing, we're we're punching above our weight. We're doing a lot better than what other manufacturers have done, but I think that's to our disciplined approach, very conservative approach, not overproducing. And um we like where we are. Um one thing, and I haven't talked about this um in my articles, but I thought I would mention it on this call. But you know, last year, as the company is bigger, you know, our executive team was set up in a manner that was the same year, like eleven years ago when we were a much smaller company. Um and you know, it's kind of this big company, small company. We never want to lose the feel of that small company, but when you really start producing larger amounts, you got these big factories. We now have over a million square feet under roof in Jackson Center with fifteen hundred employees. I mean, when I started in two thousand and eleven, we had less than two hundred employees. So when you have fourteen hundred families coming into work every day, you've got all of those challenges with it. Um we felt like it was time to maybe re- re-look at the organizational structure of our uh of our executive team. So we had a VP of Engineering named McKay Featherstone and he was actually promoted to Thor Industries. And um Thor um hired him to be VP of Global Innovation. And I think it was a real feather in Airstream's cap that he was considered for that role with everything we've done. Um but he's really looking at all kinds, innovation, both with products, but also with manufacturing and digital resources. It it's a pretty broad um role for him and he's got a nice team up there. So and it gives us kind of an inside guy up at Thor too, which is nice. Um and so so that was great. Well, when we, when we lost him as a VP and we started to look to rehire, we thought, all right, we set up in a manner that that really works. So we actually reorganized the VPs and mostly it's internal. So we haven't really been discussing it publicly. So if you think about where we were twelve months ago, we had a VP of Engineering, a VP of Supply Chain and a VP of Manufacturing. And those three V- VPs covered the entire campus here at Airstream. Um and when we were a smaller company, that was a little easier. Now we're a bigger company. That's a lot because you're doing motorhomes and travel trailers and base camps and across this entire campus. Everybody had responsibility of their discipline, but nobody had responsibility of those businesses, right? Where you could look at all of those components together. So we eliminated those three roles. There's no longer a VP of Supply Chain, a VP of Manufacturing and a VP of Engineering. What we have now is we have a VP of Motorhomes and a VP of Travel Trailers. And both of those VPs have engineering, supply chain, manufacturing. So you I the ba- the best way I can explain is we now have a buck. The buck stops there, right? That person is going to make that decision that's best for that business and really drill down into the needs of that business unit. Because what what the needs are for motorhomes is is vastly different than what the needs are for travel trailers. So that individual is onsite. And that's the other thing. In motorhomes is a growing business. It's probably gonna be our largest uh growth in the company um over the next few years just because there's uh it's a, it's a new segment. It's it's not a new segment for us, but it's a growing segment in the B B N space. But now he is based down there. Those uh associates have a VP onsite, on the line, every day, interacting, making sure that they have everything they need and the same thing um here. So you have those two VPs. And if you remember, we eliminated three VPs. There is actually a new role and it's VP of um um product quality and continuous improvement. So this VP is reporting directly to Bob Wheeler and they're looking for ways to improve quality, both in um kind of technology, but also with tooling. Um they have lean. Uh we have an entire dedicated lean department. We've been doing that now for twenty years. That department continues to grow. So they're supporting both businesses on lean. And why it's critical on that is if like you had the motorhome division come up with this really cool quality system, but they, you know, you gotta make sure your travel trailers knows about that because maybe they could benefit. So that's why we really wanted that quality position to look at the entire campus leveraging um tools. It also includes a manufacturing, engineering and maintenance and those things that really help all the facilities. So um we've had some early wins. We we actually um started that new organization November first. When McKay left uh May first, I took over the engineering role. So I had the sales role, which includes service and parts and everything, plus I had the engineering role. And then um I was leading the cross-functional team to to bring range lines. Last year was a really busy year for me. I remember seeing Eric and uh uh tie it at the deal, at the uh International Rally. I looked like Kramer on sign play. I was kind of going crazy. So it was nice to kind of get back into my VP of Sales role, which is, which is plenty of work to do. But um so it's kind of been a process of those folks getting up to speed, obviously with supply chain, making sure that he leaves that area in a good spot. In fact, yesterday, uh we had a luncheon is a Five Rivet program for our suppliers because we really want better quality, on-time delivery, support, warranty support. So we highlight our best suppliers. So those things, we don't want to lose that, you know, just because you have a VP of Supply Chain who drove it. We want to make sure the new organization still embraces that program because you know, you're only as strong as your weakest link and we have a lot of suppliers that can really derail a customer experience. So really highlighting those suppliers that um do a good job is is critical for us and they they take that seriously because they like to go to other manufacturers and say, hey, they met the fiber of it. So um yeah, so we we've been slowly kind of transitioning into this new role and then for the executive team, we still have a a marketing VP, Molly, actually CMO, Chief Marketing Officer. Uh I'm VP of Sales, which includes all sales for both divisions, all parts and service, international sales. And now I have design reporting to me. So that was a little bit different. And then we have VP of HR and Finance. You have these corporate roles that really need to kind of take a a broad view of the business. You know, we didn't want to split sales up between touring coach and travel trailers. They're calling on the same dealer and they might, you know, have two voices for a dealer that really needs one Airstream voice. So sales is outside of that. And um so far, so good. I think it's really um amazing the level of detail we're getting in in each of our business where before it was a little bit more broad-based discussions where this is, these guys are really getting into the nitty-gritty and I think the associates are certainly feeling it and they feel like they get the uh support they need. And again, it's this big company, small company, and we don't want to become bureaucratic and we want to make decisions quick. We don't want to be this big ship with a small rudder. So having those folks in the plants, supporting our associates, making decisions real time, making sure that we make the right decisions and being held accountable for those decisions is really critical. So that was really my big update today is to let you know that that happened and I wanted each of you to know that we're evolving and trying to grow with the business. And um I can tell you too, with the new plants and the new space, we're making unprecedented investments in tooling and routers and trying to have more repeatable processes so we can continue to grow and get better in uh in quality. It's, these new plants just aren't for quantity and more of uh product, but it's better product. And um and by the way, you could build more of it because you have more space, but um I'm really uh impressed with the team is is um has happened. We, we actually measured customer satisfaction throughout this entire process and um on our surveys, we've now added net promoter scores because we, we know where we stand with the RV industry. I think it's a it's a pretty weak comparative. We want to compare ourselves to other industries. How are we against Apple? How are we against Tesla? How are we against the automotive companies and because that's what our customers compare us to. Um they're comparing us to their Honda or their Mercedes. So net promoter score is one of those scores that goes across a lot of industries. And um it's very important to us. We're measuring that. In the Five Rivet Program, we ask our our customers how their experience was for sales and service. We're holding our dealers accountable on that. Um so it's it's something we take very seriously and we're measuring daily. And uh and it's, it's making us better. You know, it's it's getting that information and sometimes bad information you need to know first because it doesn't get better, better with age. Um but but we're measuring that daily and I'm really excited about. In fact, today, after I get off uh this, uh Tiffin Motorhomes, who Thor bought, a big uh RV company, their president's coming in town today and we're doing some shared best practices as well. So we're also, we are asking, you know, our um brothers and sisters here within the Thor umbrella, you know, what are they doing? You know, maybe they've thought of something different. Tiffin's got a great reputation in the RV industry. And last fall, we went over to our German counterparts and toured several facilities and looked at their I would say the Germans have a, their engineering is really, really impressive and uh we looked at their processes. So um we did that when we were bringing Range Line out because that's their number one platform over there. And so we have a really good relationship with those companies. We utilize every bit we can. So it's it's exciting time. I'm cautiously optimistic. I will say there's some noise in the marketplace. You know, when interest rates rise, that does impact a discretionary product like an RV. Um hasn't, you know, we're we're down year over year, but it was all-time record years where where we are right now in the in the um um business that we have is is just, you know, be a top three year in the history of a ninety-one-year-old company. So we're, we're in a good spot, but we're very cautious. We're watching things very closely, working with our dealers very closely. And um yeah, we're cautiously optimistic and I just want to uh end with just thanking everybody on this call. This takes a lot of time out of, out of your schedule to dedicate to this club and Airstream benefits from the work each of you do. And I can't thank you enough for that because it's uh gives our customers a way to use the product and um we benefit it from it, the brand benefits from it and I'm uh on behalf of fourteen hundred and fifty-four hard-working families here, thank you. I appreciate that. So thanks for having me.
Thanks, Justin. Uh we're gonna be spending some time with uh obviously in the Airstreaming headquarters in May. So I think I'll just ask that we just move on from now and we'll have a chance to have some more dialogue with uh Justin and some other people when we're back there in May. Uh thank you again, Justin, um and have a great rest of your day and good luck with the Tiffin books.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Justin.
Um okay, next thing, we're going to other officer reports. Uh so first, um we're on the, we're on the table, uh pair, officer reports from you.
I have nothing to report, Eric.
Thank you. Good to see you again. Welcome back from France. Or maybe you're still in France. I don't know.
Still in France, going back in a week, so.
All right. Thanks, Eric. Karen.
Nothing to report today.
All right. Um Millie, there you are.
Good morning. Thank you, Eric. Um the only thing I have to report was an interesting occurrence last weekend, the RV show that was held down in Austin. A number of us club members locally were invited to go participate. And we had a blast. We got to meet the sales folks, tour the new rigs and meet people who were checking out the Airstreams. Our purpose, there was a big club flag up. Um Peter Sajovitz organized the whole thing and kudos to him. He did a great job. Our job there was basically to meet and greet people. We wore our club tags. We talked to, we met some folks who were already owners upgrading. We met some folks who were owners who were not club members and we got the great chance to talk to them about caravans. They had a video going of one of the Cajun caravans and I'm telling you, we could adopt some kind of a program to help dealers across the country. We had a blast doing it. We checked out I'll call it the competition. They're really not the competition, but we checked them out anyway. I really have become a trailer snob and I'm proud of that. But we had a great time and I would recommend it to anybody. If they want info on it, reach out to me and I'll get you in touch with Peter and we'll figure it out. That's about all I have.
Thanks, Millie. Uh Terry?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Uh Matt?
I will defer to the treasurer's report.
Hi.
No, I'm all set at this time. I appreciate everybody showing up for the meeting though. Thank you.
And you're looking great, Ben. That's a good, I like the tie. Um okay, uh corporate manager report. I don't think Lori's gonna go through all of the printouts uh and stuff, but uh Lori, on to you and uh I'm sure you'll mind your time, but I know there's a lot going on. So on to you, Lori.
Yeah, thanks, Eric. Yeah, I'm just gonna highlight a few things. The the report is in the um port effect, but I'm sure as most of you understand that um life changes daily here. So just a couple of updates. Um as of this morning, we have eight thousand seven hundred and twelve memberships. Uh the placeholder emails have been completed and I think everybody's aware of those. So basically, everything has been changed. If we do, if we know we don't have a good email, um that format of email has been changed. So when either uh members on the front end in the membership directory as well as on the back end runs reports, those bad emails will magically disappear thanks to technology. So it should be easier for all of our club members uh that are working with these lists to manage them much eas- easier. Super excited about getting that process done. Uh the other thing that we got completed, and this was by request of some of our region presidents, is that all of our members at large are now kind of bucketed into a region. So if you're a member at large in Ohio and now you're a member at large in Region Four. So again, on the front end, when members, uh membership coordinators are trying to find their members at large in their regions, uh you'll see in the dropdown under the clubs, there's gonna be a region four or Region Twelve or or whatever region is out there. So it should be much easier to include our members at large when inviting to events. Uh the historical committee, uh when Joe reported back in November, since then I've worked with uh Damon and we do, we've issued them a uh license to Dropbox. So they're in process of trying to get that information updated. Also, um Eric had mentioned we had a uh membership webinar, website navigation, part one. We had between the two sessions, over two hundred and eighty-eight attendees. Super excited about that. So we've got two more in the works that we're gonna get scheduled for uh March and wait a minute, is this March? This is February. So I'm sorry, bit what month I'm in, half the time. So March and April as well as um John Becker is going to do one. So look for that information. We're gonna get that posted on the events page as well as other avenues of communication to our members. Um, club emails, I think most of you are aware, we shared several months ago. We're gonna be making a transition from Airstreamclub.net to Airstreamclub.org. I'm in process of organizing that. So that should be taking place in the next ninety days. And within uh that, each of the clubs, region, whatever entity it is, will be issued one license, which also includes just not the 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 email, but it will also include the basic uh OneDrive as well as a couple of other offices uh products. As Eric mentioned, we uploaded all, all of the results from our survey and then there's a lot of data in there, especially the open-ended ones, which we will be working on organizing them and kind of get a recap of all that information. But overall, um I think the feedback was great. I I feel like um there wasn't any like real huge surprises, things we know we want to work on. Uh it seems like members are overall satisfied lately with our communication, continuing to honor Wally and keeping Wally in our messages and our, in our items, the value of their membership, uh things of that nature. So if you guys haven't reviewed that data, please do. It's really exciting to see um our members engaging. We had a little over three thousand participants. So we'll follow up with additional um work on that data. So it's a little more um easy to find out all those thousands of open-ended questions. Um yes, Karen?
Is it possible to have that report pulled out of this book and just the library as a separate item? So if we want So if we want to reference it or go through it, we can just go to the library and find it rather than having to go to this book?
Yes, um, I think Eric mentioned early on that we are going to make that adjustment that we realized. Once we uploaded all that, we're going to change it to an attachment and add it into the library. So that is in process. That will happen. Yes.
Okay, I just, I know Eric talked about doing it for future and I just a couple of things in this book I would like to have easily referenced through a library as opposed to again, having to go back to this book and then find it.
Yes, we're going to make that happen. Thank you. Uh, Per?
Yeah, I skimmed some of the comments that members have put in where they wrote comments and then it's an absolute goldmine of great information. It's just, I find it very, very fascinating. So I look forward to seeing data that you might use to categorize the kind of feedback from I'm too new to the club to say anything to actual suggestions or uh you know, flagging things they think are problematic. But you know, it's fantastic that it just goes on and on. I thought it was like maybe two hundred pages, pages of great work there. I'm very happy to see that.
Yeah, it's exciting. And again, it's it's thing as um I I say to our members all the time and and I remember the last campfire chat we had. We encourage all of our members to please fill out the surveys because we do look at them. We do read the comments. We, I mean, we we incorporate that information into what we're doing. So it's really important that people complete that. The other note that I'm going to mention on the a club side of stuff is that I wasn't going to, but then I know we're excited. We are working with Goodyear to to design a discount program for their trailer tires and and their tires through Goodyear. Um, so that is in process. Stay tuned. We should have more information with that in the next couple of years. So that's directly with Goodyear. So we're excited about that. Um, any questions about the club, club stuff before I mention a couple rally things? Yes, Karen?
I'm sorry, just hold, I'll wait till I hear your rally report. Sorry, I thought you were signing off.
No, I'm talking about the rally. So uh, one thing that we've we've talked about, the rally committee has discussed, and we are going to get a team pulled together to talk about setting up some tiered, um, what I'm going to call tiered power options. Because again, the biggest challenge we are having is finding locations um to to uh hold twelve, fifteen hundred units, right? It it just is not out there. So um, we're talking about trying to get a team together to tier that. So we're going to have power hookup, maybe some kind of triple trickle charge or a lower amperage and then boondocking. And again, uh, because of Rock Springs and where we are with Rock Springs, we're also encouraging and ask the boondocking uh enter club. They're going to help us do more education and that with within our members to help them learn how to boondock. So um, they're not insecure about that. Uh, the other thing I was, I'm pleased to say too, is that the IFE contacted me and actually uh, we're going to be doing a a feature story with them. Us along with Marlene from Dazwell, uh, the Meadow Park Fairgrounds in in Virginia and Candy from Rock Springs. The three of us will be teaming together to produce an article with IFE in regards to us as in the RVs, what are we looking for as a group of of what we want to do? Uh, why we like going to event centers? And then they're going to uh kind of state their reason of why they host RV rallies. So it's a collaborative effort that we were asked to do for the association. So excited to have that put together. These numbers are maybe a little bit off because again, things are um moving rapidly and changing daily. So I would think everybody understands that we are sold out in Rock Springs. Uh, we have twelve hundred of the power sites are are done, are sold. Um, I think we have eighty two boondockers as of yesterday signed up. All the committee chairs have been notified of their park dates and they were supposed to have their list turned in to us. I think it was yesterday. So moving forward with Rock Springs. Um, yes, Per?
Oh, I'm very excited about the eighty two boondockers. I mean, years ago, we didn't even talk about that. And years before that, we were all boondockers. But what is our capacity now for boondocking at the rally? Are you at capacity now with boondocking spots? Or do we have more that can be accommodated in that category?
So um, a hundred is is our capacity um with boondocking. And that is because once we hit that hundred, we're going to be at building capacity. So that's our next challenge is is um, I mean, their their facility, we can have a, we could probably have three hundred more rigs in there, but we don't have a building capacity, right, to help to host that many people. So um, we've got another dozen open. We sent out an email yesterday to the um membership because I know I'm working with the K O A there locally in Rock Springs. I know we have several dozen folks registered there as well, but they're not registered as offsite folks. So that's what we're trying to manage right now when it comes to Rock Springs and and people um there. So it's going to be fantastic. Absolutely wonderful.
It it is amazing to think that we are near capacity for boondocking sites. I I could never have imagined that we would be getting a hundred and perhaps a waiting list for boondock. It's mind blowing.
We agree. I think this staff agrees with you, Per. It's been quite the challenge. Okay, so to tell you, we're we're working on themes, logos, things of that nature. So that'll be moving forward here shortly. At twenty twenty five, the rally committee will be visiting York actually next week to talk to them about future details. And then twenty twenty six, we are still looking again for a location. Problem being out West is just nobody has the capacity to to host us. So again, trying to figure out some different uh parts of uh how how we can manage trying to get a thousand, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred rigs into a location. So that is what I currently have right now. Do you have any questions for me before I sign off? Okay, thanks, Eric.
Thanks, Lori. Okay, uh, yeah, okay, that's good enough. All right, let's go into committee reports now. So we'll go into the quarterly financial update. Mr. Hackney?
Thank you. I apologize in advance for the background noise, uh, but if you can hear me, I'll proceed.
Yes.
Uh, it is pouring the rain in Tennessee. Financial results through the second quarter are attached. You have them. The total income is one million, four hundred sixty thousand, two hundred ninety six dollars. Total expenses of one million, two hundred seventy six thousand, two dollars. Overall income, including international rally registrations, is on pace to provide a small surplus for the current year. Club operating expenses and income are running slightly below the break even point as originally forecast. Total membership dues are up slightly over forecast at five hundred thirty four thousand, twenty five due to a higher renewal rate than forecast. And I want to point out, we talk a lot about new members and getting new members to join. But by far, the bigger impact on our budget is renewal rates. And Lori and the staff at the corporate office have done a great job getting renewals. We as members and leaders need to help in that process. So take that message back, please. So new member dues is running below forecast. warmer weather, the new member promotion and some other factors will influence this number for the rest of the year. So uh, we'll have to see what happens there. Income from the international rally reg, and I'll also point out, we're at a very slow time of the year. This is historically a slow time. We're still running way ahead of previous years other than last year. Income from the international rally registrations is seven hundred ninety seven thousand, five hundred eighty three dollars or a hundred and thirty one percent of forecast. General club expenses are eight hundred seventy nine thousand, four hundred sixty, about seven percent above forecast with the blue parade directory production uh being forecast to finish the year a hundred and twenty three percent of forecast. Preparation for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget begin in the coming months. Before the next I B T meeting, each region will be asked to provide a forecast for travel within their region. A worksheet and guidelines will be provided. For this budget cycle, all travel costs will be based on the forecasts provided by the regions following the review by the uh budget or finance committee and approval by the I B T. So again, if you don't provide a budget, a forecast, you're not going to have a budget. Also, a reminder for the upcoming meetings in Jackson Center, you must complete a travel expense form along with receipts. And I'll remind you that the budget for this travel was established by this group last fall. And it was established using the club travel reimbursement policy in effect at that time. Neither the treasurer nor the corporate manager are able to authorize reimbursement above the budget. Budget is reflected in accounts sixty seven, five, five oh for international officers, that's on page four of the spreadsheet, and six, eight, five, zero, zero for region presidents. So that's on page five of the spreadsheet. Respectfully submitted, Matt Hack, National Treasurer, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thanks, Matt. And I assume it's fine if if any of the region presidents have questions about our officers, but their travel, just reach out to you and you can help them understand it. But the data is there. I want to share something else about May for our May meeting. One of the reasons why we picked May to have our three day strategy meeting is that I think this organization, you know, we haven't done a really good job looking at long term uh capital needs in our club. If you've been to the Jackson Center office, you know that it, you may know that it needs a roof. There's some repairs need to get done. And what we haven't done as an organization is put in place a a capital expenditure plan. And we certainly can't afford to do everything that may be needed. And there's some other opportunities around capital. We need to understand what our system expenses are over time. You know, do we in fact want to invest in a mobile app for our our users to use? Do we want to have a website refresh? Do we want to have any other new programs? So one of the things I'll be asking you all to do in May is to come to that meeting um with your thoughts of what other things our club needs. And then we'll bring it together from a prioritization standpoint, right? Because the idea is that we're going to have a long list of things, I'm sure. And we need to figure out what are the top priority ones from the I B T's perspective in terms of non operational, so capital stuff. And then we'll take a look at our budget and figure out which ones we can afford to fund either in this upcoming year or outgoing years. So that'll be another key point. And the reason why we're doing this in May is because May is a perfect time to get those final prioritizations and then associated expenses rolled into a budget proposal, right? So that'll be the the second part of our thing. And you'll get some more information uh probably from Matt uh before the meeting and also through some survey questions as well on what do you see the uh the main uh needs are, infrastructure needs, and any ideas that you have? And there's some really interesting ideas being tossed around. I think none of them we can probably afford right away, but it might make sense for a board to start down a couple of directions on some of those. All right, thanks, Matt. Any other questions for for Matt? All right, Karen?
This isn't a question for Matt, but this is another one of those reports that I would like to see copied into the library for easier access and reference.
Okay, thanks. Sounds good. Uh, Lori?
Uh, the quarterly reports are already in the library. It's under, if you go to library, board of trustees at the very bottom, you should see um the tab for quarterly reports.
Yeah, and there's also, by the way, as Lori had mentioned, so that's also where all the corporate manager reports are. And also there's a a folder for all the president, international president reports. And so that is, you know, and so we're going to start building that structure out some more, um, putting long term things in there. So yeah, thanks for the reminder on that. All righty, so we're going to shift on to some standing committee updates. They're going to be brief, but I, you know, I wanted you all to um hear from a couple of our standing committees. I don't see Corey, is he on?
Yes.
Oh, you're ACI. Okay, great. All right, Corey, you first um for family and youth.
Yeah, good morning, everyone. As mentioned, my name is Corey Barker and I am the standing committee chairperson for family and youth. Eric asked me to here today to just provide uh kind of a brief but very exciting update on several topics pertinent to the family and youth for our club. As we get closer to this year's international, our team's working to finalize the budget, purchasing and shoring up supplies and getting the youth excited about returning to camp. Uh, and then those that are coming for the first time, getting them excited to come to camp. We're going to be bringing back some of the favorite activities like cooking with science and several steam activity projects. We also are introducing some new programming this year as well with a music activity where the youth will actually be making their own instruments and singing cowboy songs kind of to pay homage to the our our host state of Wyoming. More importantly, globally, uh, for regional and local clubs, I am hard at work on creating programming as well. So this programming will be coming in in the form of a workbook. Uh, and that workbook will contain various activities, including programming and education materials as well. It'd be various levels for the programming and they will range kind of from a Bambi to a classic. And basically, the bigger and more expensive the type of airstream, the more involved and the more complex the activity will be for kids. Having the varying degrees of difficulty in the programming is going to allow regional, local clubs the opportunity to kind of adjust their offerings to the youth after they look at the age and the makeup for their rallies. Uh, and it's also going to be able to provide kind of a unique experience for a particular rally and the youth that are able to attend that rally. Um, additionally, each of the activities within the workbook are going to contain keywords associated with that activity so that the regional and local clubs can focus on what they have access to. So for example, if a club has access to a hiking trail, they'll be able to find activities that can be completed on a hike by looking for that keyword on the activity or in the activity. Or perhaps they have access to, say, a kitchenette. And at their rally, they can look for those activities that have like a keyword of cooking. Uh, and so we'll we'll draw them to those activities that they can actually kind of capitalize on what they have available to them. Also, in the workbook, there will be kind of a a few examples of scheduled rallies uh or schedules, excuse me, for a rally. Those examples will include some activities that maybe complement each other and can be performed perhaps in the same day. So an activity in the morning can actually be completed and then can be coincided with a scheduled afternoon activity or an evening activity. An example of that would be an activity started in the morning where the youth are led on a hike to collect pine cones while also looking at and identifying various plants and wildlife. A little later in the day, they could regather, take those pine cones and turn them into what I call fire cones, which is basically where they take those pine cones, spray them with an adhesive, and then actually put various chemical, common household chemicals like table salt, borax, sugar, Epsom salts. They sprinkle that on the pine cones. And then later in the evening, uh, they could be encouraged to gather for a campfire. And then once that campfire started, they could actually drop those fire cones in and it creates a colorful display of flames. So also part of that workbook with some of the applicable activities, we're going to be providing a recommended sourcing or supply location where materials could be purchased or possibly found. That just makes sure that the certain activities uh have some general information about where the supplies could be purchased uh and the various necessities for an activity can be picked up. Uh, in some instances, that's always not going to work just because of supply and demand or limited stock. But it's at least a good reference point, I think, for regional and local clubs um to kind of start with. The big thing that I want you to know is that this workbook is meant to act as a starting point for regional and local clubs. It's to be used as kind of a blueprint. The aspect or the thinking is that you're going to take that and you're going to develop those activities and make them your own. I would also say to any of the regional or local club individuals that are on the call today that if anyone is interested or has an activity they would like to share in that workbook, please feel free to reach out to me. I have no problem and I'm always open to the inclusion of those ideas. Once that workbook is created, once it's shared, the idea is that new activities will be created and distributed at various times throughout the year. This for ACI, in my opinion, is a long term project that can grow as the focus on family and youth for ACI, both internationally and locally continues to grow. It's something that could become a large data point for local and regional clubs to provide content for youth. Um, I will leave you with this. It's important to remember that we haven't had something like this before in place for ACI. And building these materials from the ground up and creating the materials themselves do take time. So please just bear with me and know that I am working on this in the background to get that programming kind of created and that education validated and verified so that we can share that. So I would end with just saying thank you for letting me speak to you this morning and more importantly, for your time. If anyone has any questions, I'd love to open up the floor for any comments, concerns, or anything like that.
Thanks, Corey. Yes, I let Corey know that to leave room for about five minutes of Q and A. I'm not sure if you can see our video, Corey, but there's a lot of smiles um on the on the Zoom meeting. So, all right.
I see.
All right. Per and then Terry?
Corey, that's a great report. Thank you. I have a question. What do you envision the feedback loop to be from those who make use of the suggestions to you and to the region so that we can kind of slowly iterate and improve this? From those who make use of the suggestions to you and to the region so that we can kind of slowly iterate and improve this?
Sure, absolutely. I think it's important that. We do prompt for feedback. In my job, but also in this particular way. Education only gets better from providing feedback and giving feedback or getting feedback from those who are actually touched by that. So it's going to be really important, I think, for local and regional clubs to do paper surveys. To reach out to family members. Quite honestly, the main people that we need to ask is whether or not the kids had fun. That's ultimately what we need to ask here is did the kids have fun? Because if they had fun, then those are the activities that we need to be concentrating on mostly. It's important that the parents' input is given back to and families' input is there. But it's most important to make sure that the kids have fun. So definitely reaching out, touching with them through surveys. I'm always open to receiving any kind of feedback, adjusting. Definitely, once the workbook comes out, we can make some adjustments or take feedback. My hope is that we would provide a survey probably on a bi yearly basis to the regional clubs to ask them if they're even using the content. That's the other piece here is to make sure that once that content is created, that it's actually being used.
Thanks, Corey. Okay, I think we'll do two more questions. And so in interest of time, Terry and then Christine.
Quickly, could you share your email address, please?
Absolutely. Terry, my email address is going to be C J B A R G E R seven six at gmail dot com.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Christine.
Corey, if you said this already, please forgive me, I missed it. Do you have a date when you think the workbook will be ready? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, so at this point, I have some materials created. The main piece was trying to develop the layout so that the the content looks the same page to page to page. So now that that's kind of been developed. It's going to be a matter of just getting the content dropped in. My guess would probably be within my my goal is to shoot for the middle of the year by July. I don't know that that's going to be obtainable, but that's my goal at this point is to shoot by July. If at some point we get to that point or near that point and we do have some content, and I'm not opposed. To releasing some content as it becomes available. And I I would definitely do that. So if we got to July and the workbook wasn't completed, but we wanted to go ahead and release some materials, I definitely could do that.
And where on the website would we eventually find this?
So that's, I'm going to have to work with Lori and ACI on the website to see where we could actually drop that content in. We need to be able to make sure that it's available for you all at the the regional and local level. But I also want to be able to make sure that it's available to families. So that some of these activities could be utilized by families outside of the club. So if you if we have a family, like, for example, there's been a family in the club. That's come the last three years to camp. There's four four family members in that. That would be a great resource for them because they love doing those kinds of activities. And so being able to place that at a place where families can get a hold of that at the same time would be very helpful. So I'll be working with ACI. And the the website to figure out where we can drop that in.
Great, thank you. I want to say as a Grammy who takes your grandsons camping, I would use it during that time with those wild Indians. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Corey. And again, I think you can probably tell if you have any other ideas or questions, reach out to Corey directly. He's a blast to talk to. Just a lot of great ideas. And thanks, Corey, for all the work on this. It really shows. All right, so we're going to do one more. We're going to have Grapes and Grains, Mark Kruer, and then we'll take a break before we go into our legislative part of the agenda. All right, I think probably you all know Mark Kruer. He's the president of the Grapes and Grains Intra Club, which is the fastest growing intra club I think we've ever had. Mark is clearly doing something right, and I wanted him to come to the board and talk about what he's learned from his experience with Grapes and Grapes. All right, Mark.
Good morning, IBT members and esteemed guests. Yes, I'm president of the Grapes and Grains Club. I pulled a second term. I've only been in the airstream world just a couple of years, so I'm very young at putting all this together, but we've certainly. Hit one out of the park with our Grapes and Grains Club. We have five hundred and fifty eight members or BRNs as of today. We are the largest. Intra Club and probably the largest club period in the ACI world. We have a lot of rallies. People are actually coming to us and saying we want to host a rally. So. We've got four being planned in California next year, four consecutive weeks by. One of our members out there. And then we've also got Kelly or Kelly Geese. From Region eleven, Region ten, Kathy Geese, who's putting together one in Oregon for us. So in addition to the ones we have scheduled for the remainder of this year, which is Sipa, Virginia, we have Sipa, Texas is now closed, it's full. We're doing a mega tasting event at International. And we're asked, we're going to be sending out a jot form on that. Everybody will be encouraged to bring either a four or six pack of craft beer, a bottle of wine. Or a bottle of spirits and those will be checked in and we'll put a tag on them or put a part of a ticket on it. And then those will be available for tasting by any of the members who purchase into the tasting event. And at the conclusion of that, we will draw the tickets back and return the bottles to their original owners. And that we're looking very forward to that. That has the potential to be probably, you know, we expect two, three hundred people to join in on that. We also are putting together a lot of game nights. We found that our members really enjoy playing card games and Joker and. A lot of different board games and we're willing to teach people how to play those games. That's one of the things we did at in Maine, we played in the steers and oxen barns. We just found the lights and the. Picnic tables and turned on the lights and tables and we're playing cards until midnight, about four of the nights that we were there. So. We had a lot of fun doing that and meeting a lot of people. It's great interaction. We really enjoy that. So we're looking forward to International and playing the games there. For growth for next year, we're looking at, you know, just continuing to keep recruiting more people. We have a lot of people join us. The business card that I sent to Eric, and I think he shared that with everybody, actually has a. QR code to join our group. That we found that's very helpful. I carry two cards with me. One's our Indiana Club card. That our first card that Karen and I made, which were on our second batch of five hundred of those. And then the new card, which is the Grapes and Grains, which has the QR code. I think it would be helpful for International to provide a card. To give out presidents and clubs that if we meet people, I mean, we've already dropped our card to four or five other airstreams that have been parked in a Desto Park where we are at right now. Trying to encourage them to look into joining the airstream club. That is a very helpful thing. And if you had like the QR code to point you right there, it would be very simple. And I don't know if those would be like ambassador cards or just. Something, just to kind of a generic card that Airstream International would put together that kind of says, hey, if you want to, if you're interested in looking in the airstream world. You know, here's the QR code to take you right straight to the website. You don't have to do anything but scan it. That would be good to have at the dealers. So that they could send that out as well and say, oh, by the way, here's your link to the airstream club. One of the other things we're looking at is putting together a caravan next year, which would go into Canada, starting at the. Airstream Center in Jackson and go up to Windsor and drop in there and then cruise across the northern part of the lake. And then pop back out again at Buffalo or Niagara. And I think that would be just a little short. Probably a nine, ten day caravan that I think would be very. Good for the people because some of the caravans that we've done, looked at, they. Consume a lot of time and some people may not have that much time to put into one caravan. Nothing against the caravans, but I think a shorter caravan would be ideal. That's all of our growth, so.
Mark, when Mark and I spoke, I asked, and maybe you can share some thoughts with the board and why you think it's been so successful? Because number one, as we all know, we're trying to get more rallies for our members. I've said that many, many times, we just don't have enough. But there's something different about Grapes and Grains in its growth. Any insight into that about why it's been so successful?
Well, we get snail mail from from members who actually say they they really welcome this type of a club that for many years. They felt like they were around a campfire and they were almost. Not welcomed because they had a, you know, koozie with a beer can in it or, you know, one day have enjoy a glass of wine. And I think. People have to realize that, you know, there are a lot of people who do enjoy adult beverages. And it's not. Not a bad thing. I think a lot of people have realized, hey, there's a group of my people. I mean, I have people all the time come up and say, man, this is my people. Your rallies are a lot of fun. We have a lot of repeat customers. We have people who come and they're like, wow, I just know, you know, it's first time rally comer. The people who come to our rallies for the first time, we actually make a little, it's a actually just a piece of paper ribbon and I meant to bring one with me. But we put those on their badges and then that way other people can focus on them and say, you know, make sure that they feel very welcome and answer any questions them have.
Thanks. Let me have a couple of questions here. So Matt, and then we'll probably have room for one or two more before we go on break. So Matt.
Thank you. So Mark, I want to compliment your efforts. And I think it's important we understand one of the reasons that you're being so successful is you have. Volunteers to run rallies, people are stepping up. And because you have volunteers who may never have done something before or may never have done this before, they have new ideas. It makes it fun. And I think our local clubs and our regions need to encourage volunteers to take on the assignment of a rally without any preconceived format. Or you have very few guidelines when you when you agree to let somebody run a rally, I believe. Is that true?
Yes, we, I'd like to really see like a rally handbook guide, and I don't think there is one. So we just kind of made up our own one and. You know, kept it pretty loose and do things that we think that people want to enjoy doing.
Thanks, Matt. So by the way, Mark didn't mention it, but he's working with John Becker on caravans to make sure that sort of we do it in a way that makes sense and they can learn from each other as well. So the other thing Mark touched on, and I just have to, I can't say enough good things about Mark. I was pleased to be with him when he started it and supporting it. But but International, you know, Mark had a fantastic idea. I'll call it a Mark Kruer idea. And do something completely different. And he worked with Lori and the team, the rally team, and it's going to be pretty exciting, actually. On the level of what back does. So thanks for your creativity, Mark. If any region presidents or debt council wishes to talk to Mark, he also is a joy to talk to. Thanks for everything you've done, Mark. It's just been really quite amazing. Thank you. Thanks for joining us this morning.
Thank you for asking.
Okay, two more housekeeping things before we break. There is a caravan committee report. John Becker is not joining us. You can take a look and reading it if you haven't already. And also in the the packet is a proposal from the National Events Rally. Chair Kate Coast, and it's to do something in Jackson Center area with Airstream Inc. During the time of the solar eclipse in twenty twenty four. And we don't know yet what's going to happen. In fact, Lori may want to talk about that, but Jackson, Airstream Inc. is very interested. They're interested in doing something with us. Lori's coordinating with Region Four with Fred because Region Four has a rally nearby also. In the Ohio area, probably about an hour and a half away during the solar eclipse. So we're excited about it. We don't know details yet, but that could be really pretty fun. The other thing that. We want to do with Airstream Inc. is to do something that honors Wally's birthday on July first, when we're at this rally as well. So. We'll keep you all posted on that. Kate Coast has taken the lead on that with National Events Rally, but I wanted you all to see the proposal that she did. It's actually pretty exciting. Uh, Karen?
Isn't his birthday on July fourth?
It is, but it doesn't matter. If we get a lot of airstreams in Jackson Center, let's celebrate Wally. Why not, right?
Just a basic question, that's.
Yeah, definitely.
Remember, the old rallies always ended on Wally's birthday.
Yeah, no, there's room to celebrate Raleigh, even during an eclipse, I think. All right, so let's take a. Fifteen minute break. So that'll, yeah, fifteen minute break and we'll come into the motions. All right, thank you. I see you back in fifteen minutes. Meeting adjourned for fifteen minutes. All right, we are at our time to reconvene, but I'm going to wait and see if cameras turn on, then I'll be asking our International Secretary to, uh, just let us know if the IBT has returned from, from recess. Actually, let's just start now. All right, Terry, on to you. Let's see where we are with some people being here.
Hey, uh, you're there. What do you, how do you want me, do you want me to do this formally or just kind of ask?
Your call.
Okay, Karen Fisher.
I'm here.
Billy O'Donnell. Here. Matt Hackney.
Here.
Kai Mott.
Here.
Art Fuller.
Here.
RJ Marquette.
Here.
Christine Baum.
Here.
Brad Briggs.
Here.
Artie Martin.
Here.
Mary Madden.
Here.
India Slattery.
Here.
Greg Fadner.
Here.
Nancy Fitzgerald.
Here.
Kathy Gizi.
Here.
Did Stephen Power ever make it?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, great. We're so glad to have you here. And Laverne McHenry.
Here.
All right, we're all set. Got our forum.
All right. Thank you all for returning and Stephen, welcome. Good to see you again. Um, so before we start our second part of the, uh, our next part of thing, I just, I just want to thank you guys. You know, one of the things I had shared with the board of the past is that it's my perspective that, um, when we, so we are the leadership of our club, this IBT is, and our role as leaders is not just to work on policies and motions, but also to provide leadership across the club, um, on all of our activities. We need to understand what our members want, um, what some of the gaps are, obviously fiscal stuff as well. So I hope you guys appreciate the first half of the agenda, which is more on sort of the, the business side of the club. And also, as I mentioned, I'll be asking the region presidents in their updates to also go a little bit deeper and talk about sort of what are the things that they're seeing, but they need best practices as well. So but in the middle of that, we're going to go into our, our, um, our legislative stuff. Uh, first of all, um, the region president that happens to live with me, uh, reminded me that, uh, just to make sure you all understand that my remarks about the order of the meeting should not suggest to you that we don't want comment. We definitely want comments. It's just that we want to make sure that the comments are limited to three minutes. And that, you know, that, uh, we let people comment who haven't commented before, and that the overall duration for any particular topic is no longer than 20 minutes unless we decide to extend. So that's what that was for. It was not to suggest we don't want your input and your engagement. We do. All right. So first of all, we have no special orders. Uh, we have no unfinished business. So six dot O and seven dot O. Um, Lori, do we, or Terry, do we have any, uh, member comments on non-agenda items, uh, section eight dot O?
I don't have any member comments.
No, we did not receive any, Eric.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We're going to move into the consent agenda now. We've done consent agenda once before. I just want to remind everyone again so that we're all clear on what's going to be happening. When we build the agenda, uh, we try to identify what things based on your reading of it are probably non-controversial and that you'll be able to vote on it as a block. Right? And those are lumped together under what we call the consent agenda, you know, section nine today for we have four items under there. The thing though is that as board members, you all have the right, and I'll be asking when I kick this off to say, look, you know, I, 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 uh, I want to pull one of them out of consent to actually have it the normal discussion process, in which case, if that's the case, we'll pull that item out of the consent block and address it as part of a normal motion. If we don't hear any objections when I ask the question, then we will vote on the block together, which in this case would be four. So you still retain the ability to comment on them. Um, if you have a couple of simple clarifying questions, we can probably make that work, but I want to make sure you understood the consent agenda. Uh, Per, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, I, I have a question and a question is I don't want to object necessarily to something. I just have a clarification question that may then determine if I object to ensure that the thing is corrected. So I don't want to just object so that we can discuss that might actually be a non-issue.
I think we gotta accommodate that. Let's see how it works out.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right. So we have a consent agenda. Um, I am signed up one through nine dot four. Uh, nine dot one is revising policy sixteen dot six dot one to add region local club guidelines. Uh, motion nine dot two is international rally site selection. Item nine dot three is addition of WBCC apologies nineteen dot one, financial and operational assistance from WBCC to the foundation. Item nine dot four, standing committee reorganization revised by all those article, um, disciplinary procedure, policy, et cetera. All right. So without objection, those will be considered together in a consent vote. Do I have any objections to those being considered together? Or do I have any questions? Uh, Bard and then Karen.
Yes, I, I'm kind of, I have a question for clarification uh, on nine point one, um, adding the region and local club guidelines. Um, and it ha, um, should I just continue on with my, my concern at this point?
Let, let's try it and see where it goes. Yes.
Okay, it may be very simple, um, but it, it's somewhere in there. It states that if the treasurer is not available, that the president should be also allowed to be, um, a signer on, on the checks at all in both local and regional levels. Um, I just, I, I, I felt that was a little, I was uncomfortable with that, having the president being a, a signer. Um, I, I thought it could be an assistant treasurer or somebody else. Can I, can Matt Hackney or somebody, uh, clarify, is that not normal practice to allow the president to be a signer?
Yeah. So what I want to do is I want to have this is that, so good question, Bard. This is where we're going to be testing this out, right? And so what I've done this before on other boards is that the motion maker can clarify, but we're not going to talk about changing language. If we want to change language, we'll pull it out of consent. So Matt, is there a clarification you can add to this at all?
Um, so the language is should and the intent is to not leave a local club duty or a region due to the unavailability or incapacity of someone without a signer. If you don't have two signers on an account, uh, you could find yourself without an account accessible to the club or the region. So, um,
I think that's, that's sufficient for a clarification. Again, I'll just see whether their hands are up and we'll see which gets asked to get pulled after any clarification questions. Per and then Karen. Clarification.
Yeah, mine is a clarification question and it pertains to section nine dot four, which presents motion eighteen R one. And in eighteen R one, there are references to a number of assumptions about motions being passed and I can't find those other motions. Am I looking or am I looking in the wrong place? For example, um, um, in, in the motion statement, it, for example, says assumption is that motion twenty twenty-three seventeen R two is passed. And I can't find, uh, twenty twenty-three seventeen R two. So maybe we can just remove the, I'm not sure reorganization has occurred and that we can just strike that. Um, if that means an objection. Maybe Karen can answer that.
Understood. I think we're going to, I think based on that, um, we're going to pull nine dot four out of consent. All right. So that's going to come out of consent and be considered individually. All right, Karen, questions of clarification for the remaining three, nine dot one, nine dot two, or nine dot three?
No, mine was, uh, relative to nine dot four and you've already pulled it, so.
All right. So, um, we've got a couple of questions. And so now let me start again, uh, without objections. Uh, we will consider items nine dot one, nine dot two, and nine dot three as part of the consent process. Do I have an objection to considering those together? And Bard, this is where if your clarification wasn't answered, you're certainly welcome to say, let's pull it out and talk about it. So are there any objection to taking nine at one, nine at two, and nine dot three together? Uh, Bard?
All right, me on mute here.
A lot of funny things happening in Fullerland over there. Okay, there you are.
Yep. Okay, it might, yeah, I still problem of having the president be a signer on a local account or a region account.
Okay, so we're gonna pull nine dot one out also. All righty then. So any objections to considering nine dot two and nine dot three as a consent item to be voted on together? All right, so without objections, items nine dot one, sorry, nine dot two, international rally site selection, and item nine dot three, addition to WBCCI policies nineteen dot one, financial and operational assistance for WBCCI pass. Are there any objections? Terry?
So what happens now with nine dot one and nine dot?
Wait, 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 we're not there yet. So any objections to nine dot two and nine dot three passing together? All right, so without objections, nine dot one and nine dot two, sorry, nine dot two and nine dot three pass. Thank you for nine dot, those, those two are done. So now we move on to our item, are, are basically our new business. And so what we're going to do is that now we'll take nine dot one and nine dot four as a standard motion. So you guys all know the rules, right? And so Matt, you're on first. If you can please read motion nine dot one, and we'll go through the discussion and voting on nine dot one. So nine dot one. That does not come out of committee. So Matt, please read the motion. It will need a second.
All right. Revised policy sixteen point six point one to add region and local club guidelines. I move that policy sixteen point six point one be revised to add a new section H for regions and local clubs. Delete old section H gifts and bequests and revise to reflect current practices, including A, section A, changing the current cash deposit amount to two hundred and fifty dollars. Section B revised to require expenditures budgeted by the executive council or separately approved by the executive. Section C, added language regarding online payments and deposits and remove in free was revised from like five to six row to the general fund.
Okay, we've got some connect, we have some connectivity problems, but let's keep going. And I think people can get the gist of it and we'll see if we got a second. So keep going, Matt, but if you can stop someplace with better connectivity, that would be good.
Was it my voice? All right, I'm gonna do it this way. Is that better?
Yes, so far.
Okay, I've turned off video, so I can't see my own face. It needed you.
Perfect.
Uh, section I, item three, remove the procedure for requesting a certificate of insurance and replace with directing use of the form on the webpage. Section I, item four, updated the language to direct the use of email and scan documents rather than paper mail. Section K, added the email addresses, address transmittal of tax returns to headquarters. H, replaced executive committee with executive council throughout, and I made grammatical corrections where appropriate.
Okay, thanks, Matt. So do I have a second on? Okay, I recognize Millie a second. So next what we do on these motions is that we go to discussion. So first of all, are there any, so I think you pretty much read already your purpose impact background, Matt?
Yeah. Financial impact.
Yeah, so thank you.
For financial management provides little and scattered guidance for finance. They shall manage charitable donation receipt. Finally, this language is inconsistent with current practice for daily interaction with the club office. Background, this motion was developed in response to questions asked during a recent region officers forum. It has also been reviewed by members of the budget committee, and there is no financial impact.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, now we're going to open up for questions. So first, are there any questions from the board? I recognize Brad Briggs.
So I, I understand Bart's concern, but Region ten has been doing this where the president is the second signer on the bank and had no problems. I think this is a good way to go for people who have hard time getting volunteers at the region level, particularly and even in the local club level, to try to get like assistant treasurer or something like that. Just my input.
Thanks, Brad. Recognize Laverne McHenry, Region twelve.
Um, I echo what Brad just said. I am a signer on our account. And it's been a common practice in Region twelve for the presidents to be a signer on the account. We have a dual sign up on our expense sheet. So if I turn in an expense for me, obviously, I don't write myself a check. And our treasurer hangs on to the checkbook. So if, if, if needed, say, our region president goes to the international rally that's in Freiburg, the president can take, that is going, can actually pay for the meals or whatever for the region, but it, it makes sense for more than just the treasurer to, to be a signer.
Thanks, Laverne. Okay, Chair recognizes Ty Mott, pastor national president.
I agree that we need two signers on this. I don't think a president's a good choice for a system of checks and balances. I think it should be another person in the club. Just because if we do not have a treasurer and the president's just signing the stuff that he wants to sign, we still need to have a system of checks and balances. So I'd recommend an assistant treasurer or another member of the unit being on there to sign checks when the treasurer is not available.
Thanks, Ty. Chair recognizes Nancy Fitzgerald, Region nine.
I just wanted to reiterate that Region nine has had the president as a signatory for many, many years. It's been working great and I don't have a problem with it whatsoever. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Nancy. Greg Badner, Region eight.
Yeah, Region eight has had the president as a co-signer for many years predating me. We've never had a problem. The treasurer keeps all the checks unless there's an event where the treasurer is not going, but the president is going. So I might also mention that when I was the president of the Greater St. Louis Club, I was a signer on that club. So I think it's, at least in our region, a pretty common practice.
Thanks, Greg.
I would, I would also say I understood the language. It said should, which under law is permissive, so you could actually do something else under that wording.
Thanks, Greg. Cause I'm gonna capture a couple more comments and we'll loop back to the motion maker, Matt. All right, Christine Baum, Region three.
Uh, Region three also has had the president sign. We actually have our vice president on right now as well. But the checkbook and the decision resides first with our region treasurer.
Thanks, Christine. Lori Plummer, corporate manager.
Yeah, just what we see here, it's very common for a president to be on a, on a checking account. And I think we may get lost in the words, but the goal is for all of our regions and clubs should have at least two signers, if not three, for the just in case. And then each club and region should have their separation of duties as well as a process, like Laverne mentioned that in their region, she does not sign her own checks. Nobody should sign their own checks, right? So I think we're getting hung up on the word president and more, we should be focused on separation of duties within, within those organizations. That's it.
Thanks, Lori. Artie Martin, Region five.
Yes, thank you, Eric. Got a frog in my throat all of a sudden. I would consider it a conflict of interest to have the, the president sign the checks either for region or for local clubs. We have two check signers on the account. I just think it's a conflict of interest. Yes, we've all done things when we had to, and so far we've never run into any issues, but but having a president sign checks to me is a conflict of interest.
Thanks, Artie. Okay, looping back around to, I'm sorry, do we have any comments from the region vice presidents or from the audience? Before we loop back around to the motion maker.
I, I have a question. Why would that be a conflict of interest to have a president sign a check?
First, just for the record, just state your name and we should probably change.
Oh, Julie Cook. I'm right here. Oh, it just says board member. Oh, no wonder. I know, I'll have to rename myself. Any rate, I'm Julie Cook and I'm part of Region eleven. So for clarity, for my understanding, why is it a conflict of interest to have a president sign a check? If in fact there, say there's nobody else doing it. Just wondering why that would be a conflict of interest.
Thanks, Julie. So I'm gonna have Matt respond to all those once we finish questions. There's one more I see, another board member, Tom Smithson. Do you have a comment?
Uh, just a quick observation that many times a bank will require an elected officer only to be on check signing. So that's another thing to consider.
All right, thanks, Tom. If you could change your name if possible. All right, I still see Nancy's hand up and Christine's and Artie's. I suspect they're not anymore, actually. Let me loop it back around to the motion maker, Matt Hackney. I hope you're still heard all that. With that feedback from the board, what's your proposal? Leave it as is and amendments.
First, first, I would like to read the language as written. Each entity treasurer is authorized to sign checks on behalf of the region or local club. It is recommended that an additional member of the board, typically the president, also be authorized to sign checks in the event the treasurer is unavailable. And the intent there is that the local club or region would define their own process or policy in that respect. If they are comfortable with the president doing it, some local clubs are quite small, I'll remind you. If they would like to name a person other than the president from the board, but they really should have more than a single signer. And so that's my explanation and clarification.
Thanks, Matt. We have another question, and then I think we'll take it to vote after that. Brad Briggs, Region four.
This is on a different subject. And in several places on this motion, there it states that the local club, I don't have the exact wording in front of me, that's so there might be a nuance that Matt can clarify. But it says the local club will open up a bank account in their name and/or region or whatever, all the entities will open up in their own name. And I've had two experiences in the last two years that's made it very hard to do that. Because we are expected to use the EIN from WBCCI, we opened up a new account at a national bank, and they would not let us put it in any other name other than WBCCI because that's the name on the EIN. When we, when I became president and we changed the signers, which again, as president, I'm one of the signers for the region, the Chase Bank would not, gave us a lot of trouble because we, our account had WBCCI Region four, at which again, is not the actual name that's on the EIN. And we had to work through about two weeks to get that worked through. And I don't know if they're going to give us a hassle again when Fred does this this summer. But I, people just need to be aware that this might be an issue. And, and they told, both cases, they told us because of changes in the banking law, they have to put the account in the name of the EIN. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Okay, Matt, so as motion maker, I think the board and has weighed in now. You have a couple of options, of course. One is to to take it, have it go to a vote as is, propose amendments, or pull it and have it delayed later. What's your preference?
So first I'll point out that there's no requirement in this motion or this language to use the club's EIN. And we have opened a bank account in the past with the, under the name of the individual with the designation, a subheading of the local club name. So there are options under the individuals' social security number to use that. Now that conflicts with tax laws regarding filing, but it doesn't, it's not required if you're not making a profit, if you're not earning money. I would propose that we leave the language the way it is. Go to vote with the recognition that local clubs and regions' boards decide who the second signer is under this language.
Okay, so we're gonna go to vote now. So this is a policy amendment. It requires a majority of vote and affirmative to pass. This motion proposes admitting WBCCI policy sixteen dot six dot one to allow for ad region local club guidelines. Are you ready for the question? All right, without objection, motion nine dot one as read will be approved. By the way, this is when if you have an objection, you should say object and then we'll go to vote. So. So without objection, motion nine dot one as written and submitted is approved. Are there any objections? All right, hearing no objections, motion nine at one passes. Thanks, Matt. Thanks, IBT. All right, let's go down to nine dot four now. Karen, can you please introduce the motion and it will require a second? So please state the motion and the, and the title.
Um, Eric, I respectfully disagree. This motion came out of a committee, so I don't believe it needs a second.
Well, actually, there was never no standing committee, but that's okay. It was just an informal one. But that said, I still want to ask for a second. If there's no second, then I think the board probably doesn't support it. So is there a second on the motion? Karen?
Let, let me read the motion first then.
Thank you.
Um, this is relative to the standing committee reorganization. It's a bylaws update. The expectation when this motion was submitted that there were some other motions that were going to be presented. They did not make the agenda, and so I need to revise this, and I will tell you what words need to be struck out as I go through this. I move that WBCCI bylaws, Article three committees be revised. Strike the rest of that sentence. Section, number one, section one. A, rename budget standing committee as finance standing committee. Delete lifetime membership fund standing committee and rename membership standing committee as membership outreach, engagement, and retention standing committee. And strike the rest of that sentence. Item B, delete international rally standing committee and international rally site selection standing committee. Strike the rest of that sentence. C, delete stand, marketing standing committee. Delete the rest of that sentence. And item D, rename planning guide standing committee as volunteer training, resources, and support standing committee. Strike the rest of that statement. Number two, section two, delete international rally, international rally site, lifetime membership fund, long range planning, and budget from the first paragraph and replace with finance. Add in quotes here, and reported to the IBT at the end of the paragraph. A, section two, item A, replace one year with two years. B, section two, items B and C are grammatical updates. Number three, section three, item A, clarify that the name and contact information of each standing committee chair shall be published in the WBCCI directory and on the website. And item B, clarify that the replacement member is for the remainder of the term. Number four, delete sections four, five, six, and seven. Number five, delete, I'm sorry, section eight, delete budget and replace with finance. Define the membership of the finance standing committee as the treasurer, a minimum of two additional members of the executive council, and a minimum of two additional members selected from the region officers or the general membership. The corporate manager shall be an ex officio member of the committee. Number six, section nine, define submission requirements and dates for semi-annual reports from the standing committees. Number seven, insert a new section after section nine that reads each standing committee chair will work with a member of the executive council designated by the president. Section, number eight, Section Eleven. Replace Board of Trustees with I V T. Review last sentence to require the parliamentarian be present at all EC meetings. Number nine, delete Sections Thirteen and Fourteen. Number ten, renumber the remaining sections. I also move that WBCCI bylaws, Article Eight, Board of Trustees and Executive Council be revised as follows. Number one, insert a new Item Three in Section Twelve, Executive Council, which reads, the Executive Council may meet through. Electronic communication provided a quorum is present and all members may simultaneously hear one another and participate during the meeting. Number two, insert a new Item Six in Section Twelve, Executive Council, which reads, the Executive Council may trans any action. Any business delegated to it by the Constitution by mail, postal or electronic. Number three, renumber the items in Section Twelve, Executive Council.
Nice job, Karen. Thank you. All right, do we have a second on that?
A second.
All right, thank you, Billy. All right. Is there any additional purpose impact, background and financial impact you would like to add, Karen?
I would like, I would like to read these. The purpose of this change is to update the standing committee names and general information contained in the bylaws. Um, and the rest of that sentence needs to be struck. Uh, background, at the delegates meeting in July twenty-two. Twenty twenty-two, changes were approved to the structure of the Executive Council and I V T. These changes will support the new structure and allow for better interaction between the I V T. Executive Council and the standing committees. There is no financial impact.
Thank you. Again, nice job. All right, are there any questions or discussion first from the board? This is on item nine dot four, Standing Committee Reorganization. Okay, are there any questions or discussions from the region vice presidents? Audience? Oh, clean. All righty then. Okay, this is a policy and bylaws amendment requires a majority vote in the affirmative to pass. This motion.
Eric, sorry. May I help you here?
Sure.
She is making a suggestion that some bylaws be revised, therefore it's going to take a two-thirds vote.
Thank you, Joanne. Okay, yeah, combined it'll be two-thirds vote. Thank you on that. This motion, well. Night at four proposes reorganizing Standing Committee, revised bylaws, Article Five, Procedures and Policies, three dot one, Ethics and Grievance Standing. Are you ready for the question? Okay, so without objection, this motion. As amended, as read, as amended, will be approved.
The description you read was wrong. I'm sorry, you jumped ahead to the different, to a different motion.
Okay, well, I'm confused. I thought we were on nine dot four.
We are, but it has nothing to do with ethics and grievance, which is what you referenced.
Oh, so the title is wrong in the, in the board effect portal. Okay.
No.
Okay, hang a second. I may have an older one. I apologize. Nine dot four, Standing Committee Reorganization Bylaws Update. So without objection, uh, motion nine dot four as written, which was amended from the original documentation, uh, will be approved. So this is when the board would say if they have an objection to it being approved as written. And read. All right, so hearing no objection, uh, motion nine dot four, Standing Committee Reorganization is approved. Thanks, Karen. Okay, so now we're going to move on to our normal, um, new business, uh, part of the agenda. Our first item is item ten dot one. This is Executive Council Process. This comes from a committee, uh, the CBL Committee, and such does not require a second. Tom, would you please read the title and the summary of Motion Ten Dot One, Executive Council Election Process? Uh, Tom Smithson.
Ten dot. I'm sorry.
I think it's twenty twenty-three dash eleven.
Correct, but it's item ten dot one is what I was saying.
Okay. That's not what I have on my.
It's twelve R one.
I'm sorry, I'm, you've got me in a bad place here. I thought I only had two motions and that's not one of them.
May I speak, Eric?
Go ahead.
Tom, it's your original motion twelve R one. Which for the agenda has been labeled ten point one.
Oh, okay.
Right, so apologize for the confusion. I typically refer to it as an item number. Because for most people, that's the easiest way to find it. So we're on item ten dot one now, which is Executive Council Election Process, which includes. Motion twenty twenty-three dash twelve R one, Smithson Executive Council Election Process dot PDF. But the title of it is, agenda number is ten dot one.
Okay.
All right. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay.
I move that WBCCI Policy. Eight point six point two, Leadership Candidacy Process be deleted its entirety. And a new WBCCI Policy eight point six point two, Leadership Candidacy Process be inserted.
Okay, this comes from a committee, so no second is required. Tom, please read your background and financial impact.
Okay, purpose and impact. The purpose of this motion is to clarify for the members how the Executive Council members will be elected. All members who wish to run and have filed a statement of candidacy will be on the ballot. But only the nine candidates receiving the highest number of votes will be elected. Background. The past election of Executive Council members has been by a plurality based election where WBCCI was electing only one candidate for any one position. And the candidate needed to receive a majority of the votes to be elected. Under our new Executive Council, the members are elected. Are electing nine council members from a slate of possible candidates, and the nine with the highest number of votes are elected. This is called block voting. Financial impact, there is no financial impact to this. To WBCCI. I do have a small change in the motion, however. In. I have to find the right place here.
By the way, as Tom's looking for the change, this came from some comment, I believe, from a member. So so thank you all for doing that. So go ahead and read the proposed changes, Tom.
So this is, this is in. Policy eight point six point two. Part. J. It says, currently, it says, following the election of the Executive Council members, the corporate manager will provide the newly elect, the new. Newly born council. With the names of those members who are eligible, having served a minimum two years on the I V T to be considered for election. To an executive office position. And there's more from that. The change is the following. In the first sentence, following the election of the Executive Council members, the corporate manager will provide the newly elected council. And region presidents with the names of those members who are eligible. Because it is the I V T which, and as defined in the, in the policy for the election of the, or. For the election of the elect. Executive officers. That the. Newly elected region presidents. And the continuing region presidents. And the newly elected council members. Will have a reorganization meeting to vote on the executive officers. And so I wanted to be quite clear that it is the newly elected council. And region presidents. Uh, with the. Who will be doing the voting. And that was the J section. So there's just a small change in there in order. Just to clarify.
Thanks, Tom. All right, so are there any questions or discussions from the board on the motion as amended by the motion maker? Hey, any questions from the, up, Karen Fisher?
Yes, Tom, um, I think we still need a little bit of additional clarification in there. It's, at least to me, it's not clear that the newly elected applies not only to the council but to the region presidents. And somehow you have to make sure that the. Region presidents that will be carrying over into the next term are included there.
That's in the policy. It's already.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, though, we still want to may. Add newly elected before region presidents as well as executive council. Would, can ask you to consider making that amendment as a friendly amendment. And I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Okay, so. Find it here. In item. I, so should a candidate withdraw after membership? No, that's not the one. H, should a candidate withdraw at any time prior to just to where this is anyway, somewhere it talks about, can't find it. I put my note here, but then I couldn't. Make it apply to the right thing. It talks about if somebody withdraws. That the tenth person automatically moves up. But that's only on the assumption that the person who withdraw would have been elected to one of the top nine.
Correct.
So, but it doesn't say that. It just says if it's withdrawn, then the tenth person automatically moves up. And. So I think we, again, need a little bit of clarification. In that area.
Well, okay, we can insert the word successful. Should a successful candidate? Would that do it?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, Karen. Matt Hackney and then Joanne Miller.
Thanks, Tom. Just a quick question. Would the phrase. Newly elected board or Board of Trustees be simpler than spelling out three different entities? Being the newly elected presidents, the continuing presidents, and the newly elected council, because technically it is all the newly elected board.
I wanted to do that. That was the way I wrote it originally. But I didn't know that that would be clear enough, so. So I would be more than happy to say, provide the newly elected council and region presidents with the names of those. That's fine.
Uh, thanks, Matt. Karen, is your hand still up?
We just want to make sure with that J that Tom is is working on and revising. It's not just the newly elected region presidents, it's also the continuing. Region president. So you got to be careful how you phrase that. It would be the entire I V T, which includes the newly elected Executive Council.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Terry. Thanks, Joanne. Terry?
I'm gonna need, uh, for the minutes here, I I'm a little bit lost now. So, Tom, are you?
Just hold on a second. He'll he'll restate it before we take it to vote.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, Eddie will also send her a written copy.
All right, um, so. I see Matt Hackney and I understand that Joe Poplinsky has his hand up also. Manager hand still up?
Yes, so again, if you simply stated the newly elected board, the newly elected board is comprised of those Executive Council members just elected. And both continuing and elected region presidents.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, can we bring in Joe into the conversation for his question?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thanks, Joe.
Sorry, I first saw this motion last night and read it. I I had some of the questions that Karen brought up. Specifically on subsection, subpoint I, should a candidate withdraw after a membership voting has taken place? I brought up the point of. It was not saying that the, it had to be the top nine that they withdrew. I think this could be written a little. Clearer because. What happens if two people withdraw? Should it just not say the next highest vote getter rather than saying specifically the tenth? If two people withdrew, you'd get tenth and eleventh. I guess you could work your way through it. Sequentially, but. And. Voting has taken place is a vague term. Is that after the vote that counted? Is it after? You have started the voting window? Is it after the voting window has closed? Is that even those results? I think there is some ambiguity in there. Just making a comment. You guys can decide to do something with it or not.
Thanks, Joe. All righty, from a process standpoint, Tom, you've got a bit of input. Do you want to take some time to craft? Amendment? Are you ready now to with whatever you want to propose?
I, I, well, okay, I think I would like to just get this out of the way if we could, because we do have an election coming up. We need to get. Uh, nomination forms out, et cetera, et cetera. So let's see if we can get this taken care of. So on I, I would say should. Any successful candidate withdraw after membership voting has taken place, the candidate. With the tenth highest voting rank shall be elected to the Executive Council. Now. That, I hope, in Joe's case, will cover if there's two candidates or five of them decide to withdraw. That we will go on down to. You know, if there is a tenth or eleventh or twelfth candidate, we would automatically go to those. Is that clear enough? On that?
Uh, thoughts for the board before we take it to vote? Because I don't want to take it to vote if there's some. A lack of clarity on what. Uh, we're voting on.
Okay, I I got a better idea. Let's just, let's just pull it. We'll revise it.
All right, thank you. So based on, so based on the motion maker, we're pulling item ten dot one. Thank you. Um, we're gonna go to ten dot two now. By the way, one of the things that I think that I will reiterate is that, so great discussion. But, you know, we published the board agenda two weeks in advance of the board meeting and. We notify the board member and we do that so there's enough time for. Some of these conversations, particularly on clarifying, to get back to the motion maker. That doesn't preclude discussion here. I'm not trying to suggest that. But if there are minor tweaks and changes that you have clarifications, it works better for everybody, especially the motion maker, so he or she isn't done on the spotlight. To get that feedback in enough time where he can, he or she can incorporate that into the motion. All right, so ten dot one is pulled. Brad, is your question on ten dot one? Was it on ten dot one?
It's on your comment.
Go ahead.
Um, so if we could pull some of these out into individual documents like we talked about. And we, I'll be happy to look at it early, but when the whole document changes. We don't know what part changes, so we have to read through the whole document again to figure out what's going on.
So we put a freeze on the board packet fourteen days ahead of time. So when you get the announcement from Terry Warren, Secretary. Everything is frozen. And we took that feedback, Brad, from something somebody else said a while ago. So you can be guaranteed that what you look at. Fourteen days ahead of the board meeting is exactly what's going to be presented. And then any changes in the middle get presented by the motion maker, um, you know. But no, you you will, you're you're right. Um, we acknowledge that, that it is, doesn't change from the fourteen days ahead of time. Up, you're muted.
I apologize. I thought it stated that the document was dated two twenty-one, so I must have made a mistake. Apologize.
Yeah, Lori, uh, comments from you?
I I just, um, on the election process, the ten point one motion twenty twenty-three twelve R one. Will that be eligible for electronic voting once it's rewritten? And the reason why I'm asking is because we're again on a timeline, because we have a. A election starting June first that we have to prep. Before our May I V T meeting.
Yeah, we could push it to electronic voting. That's fine.
Thank you.
We have the ability to do that. Um, Matt Hackney and then Tom Smithson.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that there will be exceptions in the form of financial reports to the. Yeah, I just wanted to point out that there will be exceptions in the form of financial reports to the
True, true. Thank you. Tom, before we go on to 10 dot two?
I would just like to follow up on something that you just said. There was a two week window for any comments that should have come from the members of the board. And I'm sorry, I'm not pointing fingers or anything else, but being nailed at the meeting for these kinds of comments is a little frustrating from my standpoint, particularly because this document has been out there for weeks. And and to and to, you know, have these kinds of questions, which are just clarification questions that could have easily had been resolved earlier come at this meeting is just sort of frustrating to me. And it's also very frustrating to Joanne. Because we spend hours going over these things, trying to get them as clear as we possibly can. And if you see a problem, you need to let us know. Don't do it at the damn meeting. I'm sorry. I just frustrating to me. All right. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Tom. And I think that we have 44 people on this call. I suspect the majority of people would appreciate that as well. All righty, so we're going to 10 dot two now. And 10 dot two, item number 10 dot two is standing committee reorganization bylaws update. Motion makers Karen Fisher. Karen, can you please read your motion? I think you're still muted, Karen.
I apologize. I move the WBCCI bylaws, Article Five, disciplinary procedures, Sections One and Two be deleted, and new Sections One and Two be inserted. And Policy 3.11 Standing Committees, General Duties, Item D, Ethics and Grievance be deleted, and a new Policy 3.11 Item D, Ethics and Grievance be inserted.
Thanks, Karen. Is there a second on the motion? All right, Millie O'Donnell recognized a second. Thank you, Millie. All right, Karen, please read your purpose, impact, background, and financial impact statement.
Purpose impact. The purpose of this change is to update the general duties of the Ethics and Grievance Committee to improve the grievance procedure and to better align with the changes to the Executive Council and IBT approved at the delegates meeting in July 2022. Background at the delegates meeting in July 2022, changes were approved to the structure of the Executive Council and IBT. These changes will allow this committee to better support the new structure and allow for better interaction between the IBT, Executive Council, and the international standing committees. Financial impact, there is no financial impact.
Great. Thank you, Karen. Good job on that. Okay, are there any questions or discussion concerning this motion? First, from the board, I see Matt Hackney's hand up. I
Thank you. So Karen, can you please, because this motion format does not provide it, can you explain the nature of the changes? And second, can you explain whether the Ethics and Grievance Chair was involved in review and discussions?
Yes, may I speak, Mr. President?
Yeah, I think that's the only we have Joe Poplinsky, but I think go ahead and address Matt's now, then we'll go to Joe next.
Okay, yes, as a matter of fact, the chair, current chair of the Ethics and Grievance Committee was involved in this discussion and actually submitted all of these items. Because we were looking at updating or changing multiple standing committee items, it was decided that I would go ahead and present this on his behalf. As far as the changes, it's really it's pretty much all new. He went through and really updated everything. It's not just minor changes. Take this out, put this in as it was in the last one, or I would have updated it that way. That helps, man. Some of it's carryover, but most of it is is new or mostly revised.
Thanks, Karen. Okay, Joe Poplinsky.
Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted.
I'm sorry, my my hand was raised from the last issue and to address a little bit Tom Smithson's upset maybe with the feedback I provided. I know I'm not a board member. I received no notification that the information was online, no email communication, anything as a standing committee chair. I only discovered it a couple of days ago myself on the website. I used to be in a communication loop. If if you want this feedback, we've got to know that that information is available, be looked at. I try to look at it in a timely fashion when it's posted, but not when I'm not told it's there.
Thanks, Joe. I think what let me talk with Lori about this later. Maybe we can include is that we don't typically notify standing committee chairs, but I think that's something we can start doing. When it goes up onto the website 14 days ahead of time, I'll work with Lori to make sure that the standing committee chairs and special committee chairs are notified as a courtesy email update. I think that's good input, Joe. Thank you. And thank you. Joe did a great job. By the way, Joe crafted his questions. It was probably two in the morning. So thank you for that. That was quite helpful. Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, thank you. Because that way I knew that my motion wasn't on your agenda.
Yeah, yeah, no, we'll. I think it's a great idea to include the standing committee and special committee chairs on notification process. Thank you. All righty, any other questions from the region vice presidents or from the audience? Again, this is on item 10 dot two, standing committee reorganization bylaws update. All right, from the board. Okay, this is the bylaws update. It requires a two thirds vote to pass. Again, this amendment is proposing a change. Two dot two, three dash. I have a hard time reading sometimes. Standing Committee Reorganization, Revised Bylaws, Article Five, Disciplinary Procedures and Policy 3.11, Ethics and Grievance Standing. Without objection, item 10 dot two, motion 2 dot 2, 3 dot 4 dot R2 will be approved. Do I hear an objections to passing that? Proving that. Okay, so without objection, motion passes. Karen, great job on that. I also want to give kudos to Karen and other people. She spent a tremendous amount of time talking to all the standing committee chairs, which is what Joe was talking to. So they did a really good job of getting the feedback from the people that had a had a position this. So thank you. Good job on that. All right, let's go down to 10 dot three. Matt, do we still have you from a seller connectivity standpoint?
Absolutely, and I will attempt to have video also. Please let me know if connectivity problems resume.
Excellent. So Matt, please read your your motion under item 10 dot three.
Thank you. Motion 2023 dash 16, clarify and reorder Policy 16.6.10 Airstream Numbers. Summer motion. I move that Policy 16.6.10 be revised to clarify that airstream numbers may be displayed in a number of ways in addition to the traditional method. Specific instructions and alternative display methods may be found on the club webpage, and that display is required for participation in some club activities. I further move that the order of information be revised and be revised to provide why we have airstream numbers, how they are issued, that some numbers are reserved for specific purposes, and that some numbers are reserved as heritage numbers.
Thanks, Matt. Is there a second? All right, I see Pear's got his hand up first on that. Thank you all. All righty, Matt, please read your purpose, impact, background, and financial impact.
Thank you. The purpose of this motion is provide an updated display information which better reflects current acceptable practice consistent with the information provided to members. In addition to better organize this section in the policy background, this motion was developed in response to questions asked during discussions with new members. There is no financial impact, and I would like to read it as slightly revised. Thanks, or at least identify some change, some perfecting of the motion. Thanks to comments from Joe Poplinsky.
Yes, please do.
All right. And I'm working from attachment two. Joe correctly pointed out a couple of errors. One is a carryover and one is mine.
Do you want to state what those are?
Yes, I'm getting to them. I'm sorry. It's a little here we go. Okay. The first is down in item. Well, it's actually the second. Here we go. Item D. Number seven. The very last sentence in that item will be split out to create an item nine. That nine will say 1,000 plus series, 1,000 through 32,000 plus available to be assigned to any WBCCI member period. And then it'll be followed by the sentence that says the only exceptions to this are found in Policy 16.6.10, item E. The second change is in item E1, item II. We're going to replace the word VPs or the abbreviation VPs with president. And that corrects one that both Tom and I missed, as does the previous. So thank you, Joe, for your comments.
Thanks, Matt. All right. So questions now, questions from the the board first, and then we'll move to additional questions to recognize is Christine Baum, Regent Three. Questions or comments?
At what point could I propose a friendly amendment?
You may do it now.
Okay. I would like to offer a friendly amendment in this way, in part as revised, in part of in part A of Policy 16.6.10, as revised in Exhibit Two, strike the last sentence and insert the following. The display of airstream numbers is required for participation in club activities to assist with the identification and location of club members by members and for logistics and safety considerations. Meaning that I would like to take out some and make it so that the airstream numbers would always have to be displayed in some ways. I say this because I really feel that aside from it almost acting like a 911 position perhaps in a rally, it also is the name badge for the airstream. We as members are encouraged to wear our name badges. We 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 want all of our members to wear our name badges if possible. And I think it's equally important for the airstream with the number that the number acts in some ways as a name badge, and that I don't care how it's displayed, but I do believe that the airstream numbers should be displayed in all club activities.
Thanks, Christine. So I think we're going to a lot of discussion on this topic. So I'm going to ask that you just hold that. And then we'll see what the rest of the board is look. Hang on a second. I see your hand up. And then we'll come back around because I think we get a lot of questions, discussion of this topic. I want to make sure that. Okay, Matt, go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to point out that this is brought up as a result of comments from new members. It was discussed by the Executive Council. The language here was compromise language. I would certainly support that change if that is the consensus of the board. I know as a caravan leader, I require the numbers.
So Matt, as motion maker, do you I'm proposing that you we hear all the comments first, and you make a decision how you want to amend. Is that appropriate with you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. All right. So Pear, and then Karen, and then Laverne, and then Terry.
Matt, I would like to propose a friendly amendment, and the friendly amendment is in Section A of 16 dot six dot 10. I would like to strike the words in the second paragraph where it says do not damage air streams or airstream. And I don't want to make a statement that we kind of have to be liable for. We already said you strike those words out of the sentence, it becomes the vinyl numbers are easily applied or removed on all modern air streams. It doesn't say that they do not damage, because I think a lot of people say that it's not true. That's my suggestion.
Okay, thanks, Pear. Again, we're going to do this one. By the way, we started the 20 minute clock to make sure that we have time to escape out of this if we don't need to. All right, so Matt's going to take all this feedback from all y'all, and then I'll ask him what he wants to do in terms of accepting friendly motions or some other language. It's a combination of your input. Karen and then Laverne and then Terry.
Whether it's done now or whether it's done at the end when Matt makes this thing, I did not catch or fully understand the second change that he had said he was going to incorporate.
Okay, let's have him come back to that because he may actually change it again after the other board feedback. So all right, Laverne and then Terry.
Um, I highly caution the word must display your numbers. I represent California and Nevada, and I would say, you know, we're lucky if if 50% of our members put their numbers on their rig. You know, we do have flags. We do have other things, but we don't necessarily always have our numbers up. It's just not something many members feel that the numbers damage their rigs. We live in the hot sun area, so we tend to not put our numbers on our rigs. And and it drives me nuts at some places because I'd like to identify people. But that will be a big problem in Region 12. In fact, I we we won't even adhere to that, I'm sure. That's my my two cents.
I think I think Laverne Matt wants to clarify because I think his motion says alternate ways of display are also required. But Matt, why don't you clarify that? This is an important question.
Yeah, that's that's actually item 10.
Okay, okay. All right. Thanks, Laverne. Okay, Terry, and then Kathy, and then Millie.
So in in terms of the safety issue, Eric asked my husband Hal Hendricks, who's a retired fire chief from a very large fire department in California, whether this is actually a safety issue to have the numbers on the trailer. And he thought that was pretty ridiculous. If there's an emergency, the last thing the fire department or EMTs are going to be doing is going through a field of silver air streams, looking for a particular number. That's not how they function. So I I think this idea that it's a safety issue really should be dismissed. And look at, do we want to force people to do this so they can attend events? And if they don't do it, what are we going to do about it? I think that's a question we really need to address. If they pull into international are we going to tell them to go home? I I do not support a must in this statement. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Kathy, and then Millie, and then Ty.
I also want to add on to a couple of things that very I took an informal poll at my last board meeting, and to a person, they said, do not say must. They just they just felt like it's just one more powerful hand telling them what to do at the club level. They were very much against it. I also want to represent, we have a large amount of solo women travelers who do not want to identify who they are. It's just too easy for somebody nefarious to figure it out. They have a lot of security concerns that I don't necessarily have. And out of respect to them, I could not vote for this where it's required.
Thanks, Kathy. Millie, and then Ty, and then Matt or Lori?
Mine is is basically piggybacking off both Laverne and Kathy. The must thing, there's an awful lot of times when people are traveling not as a club member. They're just traveling alone. Lots of women in the Stella Sisters. I don't think making it mandatory is going to do our club any favors as far as getting people, especially new members, to buy into the stuff we're trying to do. Just must, I'd stay away from it.
Thanks, Millie. Ty, and then Lori and Larry.
Okay, I I understand what we're trying to do. I think it should say should display their numbers. We're giving them many options of displaying them so they're not ongoing down the road for safety reasons. But I've been to a region rally, and I've been to a international rally where I had to locate somebody for an emergency phone call, and we had no way of finding the trailer that didn't have the numbers on it, and they had moved twice. So the numbers do come in handy. I feel that it should be displayed with all the options that we're giving them. So the numbers do come in handy. I feel that it should be displayed with all the options that we're giving them. We should require that they do display their numbers.
Thanks, Ty. I, I think I'm, I think Matt, your hand may be up resolutely, but I'm gonna go to Lori and then, and then Larry.
Yeah, I, I too want to say that I, I'm strongly against using the word must. I would say is big red numbers required when people call and ask to join the club is probably in the top three questions that we get asked. And if we, if we, when we say no, we encourage you to display them in other methods. People are much more receptive to saying, okay, well, I can join the club. Um, and then I, I agree with Terry. I, I spoke with some of my folks in, in emergency response. Safety at a rally is, that's, that's a myth. I mean, it's not there. I understand. Um, displaying the numbers are super helpful when you're trying to locate somebody in the sea of a thousand air streams, but um, I can tell you, I think our, our process needs to leave it as a must and encourage and let people organically fall in love with the club and then display their numbers because we see that happen on a regular basis. And just so you guys know, it hasn't been released yet, but we are going to work on a, um, I don't want to say a contest, but we're going to encourage that in Rock Springs, obviously, and have some, put some fun behind it, people displaying their big red numbers. And again, um, I think the fun and encouragement is, is where we need to be. That's it.
Thanks, Lori. Larry?
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, the, the shadowing issue for an aftermarket airstream is a problem because a clear coat does have a shadow there and you can clearly see those numbers even after they've been removed. And that's a big hesitation for folks, but I think the world of the idea, but I, that, that word must, you, you know, the people today, it's just our generation. They don't like being told what to do. I mean, I think maybe the wording could be at your discretion, please display it any which way you can uh, and not limit, put it here, 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 just at the owner's discretion, display the numbers in any way they see fit. Um, because many people are dead set against that, and I, I can't support that word must either. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. So we have one question from the audience, but Christine, let me follow up with you and we'll go through the board and the VP's comments also, and we'll go to, uh, other members. Christine?
Um, I, I think I misrep or I, I believe that they should be displayed. I don't believe they need to be on the airstream. Um, I do believe that it is important, and I think some of the new ways that people have come up to creatively display their numbers are pretty interesting and fun to see. But I do believe to participate in an airstream event that the, the numbers should be displayed and we should encourage people to do so. Um, I think it's part of our history. I think it's an important part. We get questions all the time. When we pull into a park, we do display our numbers on our airstream. Um, it's a way of, of recruiting new members because they come up and ask me what that means. But I'm not wedded to the fact that they have to be displayed on the trailer, but I do think that just saying some activities offers wiggle room. And I think it's important that, you know, if they're going to participate in an airstream event that we encourage them as much as possible to display their numbers in whatever way they decide to do it.
So Christine, just to clarification where you are in this, because I just want to make sure I understand. I think that's a big just question about must versus should.
Correct.
What, what, what you said? Sorry, go ahead.
I don't think it's a must saying that they have to be on the trailer. I do understand that for caravans, the numbers must be on the trailer. But to participate in an airstream event, I believe everyone should display their numbers in some method and we offer many, you know, examples of the ways that this can happen. I guess I don't, I guess my question is, why would somebody not want to display their numbers? I guess that's where I'm not understanding. Why would somebody, I can understand why they wouldn't want to put them on the trailer, but there's so many creative ways that you can, you know, prop up your number outside your trailer. I don't understand why people have trouble with doing that. I guess that's where I'm not understanding.
Okay, thanks, Christine. So by the way, we're going to hit our twenty minutes. Um, I, I'm getting the sense that the board is willing to continue for another section on this, but let me recognize Greg first and then and then Greg next.
Yes, thank you. I don't want to be in a position of dealing with and policing the member that shows up without their number. I'm a big fan of the numbers. I got them on my rig. I had them on the previous rig. And I think to encourage and so on and so forth is great. But we do have members, they're not going to put their numbers up. And it's going to cause a problem and I don't want to be, that's not a problem. I want to be policing. There's more important things to do. It's great to encourage people um, offer that. We could even have contests at rallies. Different ways to post your number and so forth, but to police it and say, okay, leave the rally. You don't, you're refusing to post your number. I don't want to be in that position. So I'm against the must.
Thanks, Greg. Okay, Greg. Okay, I see another board member. I'm, we're the board members first and then VP's next. So Nancy, for Cheryl, Region Nine President?
It, it is the friendly amendment to simply remove the word some.
I think we're just talking now, Nancy. So maybe just ask, maybe if you share your, your perspective, that might help come to.
I, I don't see any, I understand what everyone is saying. Um, I, we all require, um, you know, the numbers, but I'm certainly not going to be a police. I like the idea of just remem- removing the word some in A. And it says for participation in club activities is as if it's doomed and you will do what you're asked to do and expected to do. But I, I don't think anyone wants to be a police. I would go ahead and continue assuming everyone's going to abide by this. But nowhere should it say you're going to not be allowed entrance if you don't do this. So I don't have, uh, I understand what everyone's saying. I just am asking, could we just remove that word for participation in some club and just say for participation in club activities and make the assumption that we're, we're going to behave?
Thanks, Nancy. Okay, so I'm going to, the process is I'm going to be asking the, now the region VP's. Um, I think that the region VP's, if this is anything you want to comment on, this would be a good one because some of you will be the region president next year and you will have to, um, administer whatever we decide. So any questions or comments from region VP's? Florence? I think you're muted still.
Yeah, there we go.
There we go.
Nice. Um, I, I just want to re- reiterate, I, I believe Kathy, um, Gacy already mentioned this, but to, uh, give, uh, closer explanation to, I believe Christine's comment, why anyone would not want to display their numbers perhaps at all times. I'm a solo female traveler and I feel that somebody who really wanted to find out who I was and where I lived could do so. Um, and so that, that is clearly my only reason for not, um, uh, supporting a permanent display of, uh, of BRNs.
Thanks, Florence. Okay, other region VP's. I see John Holly, Region eleven.
Yes, I, it took me a year to put my numbers on my trailer. Um, and I, because people were saying, oh, you rent your trailer. I said, no, I don't rent my, well, what are the numbers for? So that's where I usually get from people in the, in the RV parks. Um, I, I think, uh, we have creative ways to display the numbers. And I think if we, if we emphasize that, if, if, if Matt can make that the possibility that, that must is removed. But in fact, we want the numbers to be seen, especially at a rally or a, a club event or whatever. There are a lot of ways to display the numbers and they need to be given that opportunity to do it that way. And not necessarily to put it on the trailer as I have done. Thanks.
Thanks, John. I see John Havener, Jet Havener, uh, Region Six, First VP.
And yes, my thinking on this is hearing everybody, there's so many people that do not want to travel with their numbers. They don't want to stick them on the airstream. So could we put some wording in there in the manner in which your big red number will be displayed at an event? And at that point afterwards, it could be taken off. There's all kinds of methods that were there, but while you're attending the event, we ask that you display your big red numbers.
Thanks, Jen. Okay, see one more, um, VP, Julie, Region ten, eleven.
Hi. Hi there. Um, I will not put my numbers on my trailer. However, I am now encouraged to be creative about or getting my numbers so that they're on, uh, my trailer when I'm at an event. I'm happy to do that, but I will not put it on my trailer. I don't want the ghosting. I don't want to have to take it off. I don't want an issue if I decide to sell my trailer. So, um, and honestly, we're adults here. So if people want to put them on, put them on. If they don't want to put them on, don't put them on. It really shouldn't make any difference.
Thanks, Julie. Okay, so now we have, um, a couple more comments, then we'll kind of loop back around to the motion maker and see what he wants to do on this. And so I see Joe Poplinsky's hand was up and then Tom Smithson. Joe, you still there?
Yes, I am. Um, okay, there's been a lot of debate here and the answer is actually in the document. It's just hidden where you don't see it. If you look at paragraph six dot or sixteen dot six dot ten, A point, sub point five. Um, it says additional information regarding blah, 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 and other dis- options for display are provided on the club webpage. If that was strengthened to say options to display your numbers not permanently affixed to your trailer are shown in, it would have probably solved most of this discussion. And to, to do that, you could, you could change the wording under paragraph A to say the traditional method of display on your trailer is described below, but two point five for alternatives. You do that and I think it resolves everybody's concern.
Thanks, Joe. Glad you could join us, by the way. Um, I always like to hear your perspective. Uh, Tom?
Twenty minutes.
Thank you. Last one, Tom. Then we'll loop back to the.
I don't know, I don't know where to start. Uh, the first thing I'd like to say is that on modern trailers, um, most certainly the numbers are very easily removable. I've taken them off of my trailer any number of times. There's absolutely no ghosting at all. The vinyl numbers with a hair dryer come right off. It's a versatile process. I would like to emphasize, however, the first line, the first sentence in A in Matt's motion, which is the big red numbers of, and of the club and the club decal on an airstream is a mark of pride in membership in the Wally Byam Caravan Club. What I'm hearing here is, is that people don't have pride. I'm sorry, that sounds a little curt. Don't have pride in the airstream club. I'm sorry. I think that number is historically significant to who we are and it needs to be displayed. Now, I hear the Stella people, I hear the, the single ladies driving down the road and all of that sort of thing of not wanting to have the number on there. And I understand that and I appreciate that, but in that particular motion, there is an option to provide another way of displaying the number at at a WBCCI activity. Not necessarily going down the road, but at a WBCCI activity. And I think that that, that needs to be emphasized that when we're, and I didn't see the word must, by the way, in this, I, I see the word required, uh, required
at some.
WBCCI activities. I thought that was what the motion was, but and even the amended motion or the friendly emotion. So
Okay.
I think you just need to look at it that we give the option. We need to display the number to express our pride in, in being a member of WBCCI. Thank you.
Okay, there was one more, Abe, uh, Region Twelve, uh, First VP. Um, I missed you the first time around. Abe, go ahead.
Good morning, everybody. Um, yeah, for me, it's, it's, it's about, you know, the history of the club, you know, I don't think it's a, a big ask. Uh, I join a club that has a number and I, I will display it and I, I don't see why the problem of putting those numbers, uh, it's part of the club and what's, I, I don't understand. So I would go for, uh, uh, not the must, but, uh, should probably. Thank you.
Thanks, Abe. Okay, so as your, as your chair of the meeting, so, um, I really hate to take things to a vote where we don't have consensus. I know we'll vote, we'll get an answer. So I think we have a couple of options in front of us. First of all, I would argue that this is probably not time sensitive. The other interesting fact is that, as you guys probably know, the current bylaws actually suggest that it's required at all club events. I don't know the exact language, but that's what it says. So a couple of options are, we can push, keep talking through this. Matt can propose amendments. We can pull it, have more discussion added perhaps at the strategy meeting. Um, or something else. So we could just vote on it. So Matt, what's your, what's your preference from as a, as the motion maker on next steps?
Okay, so first, it is required for some club activities, period. I will tell you on caravans, it's required on most. It is a very important part of parking trailers in sites that accommodate their size. It is currently required. The motion is currently written, gives you an option to display it and we send a sheet, an article that was previously published in the Blue Beret on alternate ways to display your numbers without affixing them permanently to the trailer. And that would be available on the website for the last line in item A. I will entertain the friendly suggestion of removing the sentence. Do not damage the airstream or easily applied or removed on all modern air streams. And I would encourage us all, when someone doesn't want to display their numbers, to send them to the all about big red numbers as outlined in that last item in A to encourage them to display it when they're at events in ways that are more acceptable to them that include not permanently affixed to the trailer. And I'd like to bring the motion forward.
Okay, so Matt, if you could please state your amended motion and then we'll go to voting.
All right, so uh, is it acceptable to only state the changes from what's in written before you? Or do I need to read the entire?
I think it's important to read the whole thing this time.
Okay. Uh, sixteen, I'm going to read the, the revised language. Sixteen six ten. A big red numbers, BRNs, and the club decal on the airstream is a mark of pride and membership in the Wally Byam Airstream Club International. The display of airstream numbers is encouraged and is required for participation in some club activities to assist with the identification and location of club members for logistics and safety considerations. The traditional method of display is provided below. Club decals are placed on the front and rear centered above the numbers. The use of six inch high numbers is desired unless space does not permit, in which case headquarters will provide them. The club decal is affixed to the recreational vehicles centered above the front and rear windows or cluster of lights if so equipped. Though lower or not centered placement is acceptable, the airstream badging, antenna cameras, et cetera, do not permit application preferred location. Airstream numbers should be centered front and rear below the decal. Spacing of the individual numbers should be virtually pleasing, not too crowded, not too distant. Membership stars, one for each five years of membership are ideally placed half on either side of the club decal, space permits. In the case of an odd number of stars, the extra star should be to the left of the club decal. If space does not permit, the stars can be placed above or below the club decal.
Okay. Is that the material part of it? Because I think we were really focused on the bigger. And so I answered your question in, 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 uh, in accurately.
Okay, well, item ten or the last item in, in A is the important sentence.
Yes.
Additional information regarding the history, purpose, detailed instructions and other options for display are provided on the club webpage. All about big red numbers or BRNs. The other changes I made, if I may, uh, per Joe Poplinsky's comments, where you get to assigning numbers in item D. I moved the last sentence in number seven to a new number nine, which states one thousand plus series, one thousand to thirty-two thousand plus available to be assigned to any WBCCI member. Available to be assigned to any WBCCI member. The only exceptions to this are found in policy sixteen point six point ten, item E. And then in item E. Number one, AII. Heritage numbers in the one hundred series are not restricted and can be assigned to international presidents in according. In accordance with policy sixteen point six point ten, item D, sub item two.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Matt. Okay, so we're going to vote now. This is a policy amendment and requires a majority of vote in the affirmative to pass. Um, this motion proposes clarifying and reordering policy six on six dot ten airstream numbers as amended. Without objection, uh, motion three, two, twenty three dash sixteen as amended was approved. Are there objections?
Yes, I object.
Okay, so now we go to roll call. Thank you. Uh, Karen, we're going to move this to roll call. Are you ready to do the roll call?
I am, but could I clarify who made that objection?
Christine Ball, Region Three.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Uh, this is an objection. So Vice President Pear Hamquist. So Eric, can we clarify just one more time what we're voting on here?
The roll call on the motion is stated, which is amended motion. This is the vote.
Eric. Yes. Can I move to postpone this until May so we have a chance for all of our regional officers to talk to our members? To really get them to decide what they want to do on this?
Well, I I'm going to leave that to the motion maker to decide whether he chooses to withdraw it or not. He said he didn't.
I didn't say I didn't say withdraw. I said postpone it so it gives the region officers a chance to talk to their members. For their members to decide how they want to go on this.
At this point, we're starting the roll call vote. So, uh, Joanne, do you have a parliamentary interpretation on this?
Yes, I do. He can ask that question at any time during the debate. And so it can be decided by this board if they want to postpone this. He has specified. I believe Ty said at the May meeting. Is that correct, May, Ty? So he's he's given, he has given a specific time, so he may move. That this motion be postponed until the May meeting.
Okay, so we'll switch to that track to hold tight, Matt. So there's a motion to postpone this. Is there a second to the motion to postpone?
My second.
All right, Karen proposes postponing it. And now we're going to go to a vote on postponing it or not, which will be a majority vote. So. First of all, without objection, it's postponed. Is there objection to postponing? In other words, do you want to talk about side now?
I object.
You object to postponing. All right, so now we do a roll call vote based on postponing it.
Are you ready? Yep, I'm ready. All right, Pear Hamquist. Yes or no on postponing?
I'm in favor of postpone.
Got it. Greg Wagner.
Yes, I'm in favor of postponing.
Okay, I've got what we're voting on now, so you can just vote yes or no. So Ginger Slatter.
Yes.
Bard Fuller.
Yes.
Sorry, EC member Karen Fisher.
Yes.
Region five, President Artie Martin.
Yes.
Our J Marquette, Region ten, Region two, President.
No.
Region nine, President Nancy Fitzgerald.
No.
Region ten, President Kathy Giese.
No.
Immediate past President Tim Ott.
Yes.
Region twelve, President Laverne McHenry.
No.
Region four, President Brad Briggs.
Yes.
Region eleven, President Stephen Parr.
No.
Region three, President Christine Baum.
Yes.
Uh, Secretary Terry Warren, no. Larry Madden, Region six, President.
Yes.
EC member Millie O'Donnell.
No.
Treasure Matt Hackney.
No.
All right. Nine, yes. Eight, no. The measure passes to postpone, uh, voting on this motion.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. So this will be postponed to a date certain as the expression goes, and so we'll bring it up in the May IPT. Thank you everyone for that discussion. Uh, Joanne?
I I would just like to clarify for um. Terry, I counted ten yes. Terry?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. You're right, ten yes, eight no. Correct. Passes.
All right, so it passes. All right, thank you everyone on that one. Let's take a ten minute break and then we're going to come back. Uh, region presidents and go in the region presidents discussions and go into a closed session on the parliamentary question. All right, thank you all. Ten minutes. We'll see you back in ten minutes. Thanks.
Hey, Matt, I want to know where you're going. We can hear your navigator. Where are you headed?
I'm sorry, I should have muted it. Um, we are headed to Louisville by way of Bardstown. We're going to the Bourbon Classic.
Oh, man, I shouldn't have asked. Now I'm jealous. Are you taking? Are you, are you taking bourbon orders? I can Venmo you.
Do you have something you want?
I think I do. I'll send Beth. Is Beth with you? Yes. Well, I don't, I can't see the driver. I'm assuming it's Beth. You know, he could have picked up some rando on the street that likes bourbon. You never know. Yeah, I'll send you a a text list. I mean, a text message. There she is.
Uh, make it, make it pretty quick because we're going to be at that store that we like here in the next uh. Forty-five minutes.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
And she's also going to Lux Row to get her chocolates.
Well, see, that was going to be one of the things I was going to ask if she's going to Lux.
Of course. You want some chocolate barbels?
I do. The dark, if they have them.
Yeah, well, they they actually come in a tube with both, but I'll see what they have.
I'll, I I will settle for both happily. Cool beans. Thanks, kids. Travel safe. Will we see you in Texas soon?
Hey, Matt, you're muted. We didn't hear anything.
I said we'll be there for the rally and just before. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay, we got a two minutes looks like on my clock.
So Eric, since we're not on the record yet, with your permission, I'll look for and send all of the board members. The past Blue Beret article on altered displays. They're talking to others. I've been looking for it for the last five minutes here on the road, but not having a lot of success. So I will find it. I will send it. To the board and then they can do with it as they wish, but that's the information we provide on the caravan.
Eric, I have a question.
Yes.
I have to leave at two o'clock. So if we haven't gone into closed session yet, would my first vice president be able to stand there in my place?
Yes. Okay. Ginger, when you leave, actually, I I know you were one of the people. I wanted to have a chance to speak, though.
Yeah, yeah, I did give Chris my um, my my two cents in that area, so he knows how I felt about um, speaking with.
Perfect. All right, we'll see how it goes. We'll try to move through things. I know it's been a long morning already. Thank you. Okay, I think we're there now. All right, let's continue on. Um. There's no more voting, so I think we're fine with respect to not recording who's present again, but um. Okay. Let's do region, region, um, president reports. So I'll just start at one and because it's easy to think through right now. So starting at one. Uh, reason, reason president updates. Okay, maybe I shouldn't have started at one. Let's start at twelve. We'll go backwards.
He's there. He's there.
There we are, Bart. Okay, region one, region president updates.
Um, okay, well, region one is active. However, we're dormant right now. Um, we're uh. Dealing with with the cold weather up north. And so we haven't seen much of each other over the last, you know, uh, seven months or so. So we're anxious to get the spring going. Um, we have a couple of great things coming up. Um, we we have a our region rally of June fifteenth to the eighteenth. Flocking the Cape and it's a great lead off to Hyannis, Martha's Vineyard, Nantucket. Um, we have a Saturday clam bake with lobster, chowder, steamers and mussels. So that that should be just absolutely fabulous. We're also going to be out on the Cape, on Cape Cod again for April seventh through the ninth at our Pets and Paws Rally. It used to be a regional rally and or it was a national rally. But though that designation has been taken away, it is still has regional significance. So Pets and Paws is coming up early April. That would be our kickoff. Okay, that's all from us. We're we're having a wonderful time hoping that the weather improves.
Yeah, so thanks, Bard. All right, hang in there with our weatherman. All right, region two. Hmm. Okay. We're going to. Uh, he's muted.
Unanswered. He's here, but not answering.
We're going to loop back to three and see if we'll get two later. All right, Christine, region three.
Um, I would like to ask my second VP, Bob Hoffman. He's getting ready to attend another meeting and I'd like him to talk. Um, the WhatsApp and how he has seen it in years. So if I could. And then I'd like to fish up about some region rally information as well.
All right, Bob Hoffman.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. Um, yeah, just a brief comment about the WhatsApp. So thanks to Eric and then also Mark Knighton for getting me involved in uh, working on a solution that we could. Uh, disseminate down through the clubs. I've seen WhatsApp used now both at our local club level for communication as well as. Um, a rally I attended down at one of our clubs in Florida. Um, it's an effective way of communicating and you know, in the past, we used to have whiteboard where people would write. Events going on, pop up events or changes in events, things like that. Uh, the WhatsApp does a nice job of doing that digitally and it's at everybody's fingertips. Um, the other nice thing is it, you can um, select the way you want to receive the information, whether it's via the WhatsApp app. Via text message, things like that. So um, I know we're going to be doing a post in our region three in the Blue Beret from region three level. Um, just talking about the various options that are out there, but um. I would encourage everybody, if you've not looked at using these alternative methods of communication for your rallies to do so. Um, as Eric, you mentioned earlier, it's a great way of. If there's a change in a posted schedule, it's an easy way of letting everybody know instantly. Um, what changes are taking place, or if somebody is having a pop of events such as a happy hour or, you know, small potluck. It's an easy way of notifying people. So again, I would highly encourage it. Certainly, if you have questions, I'd be happy to help. Um, and again, thanks to Eric and Mark for getting me involved in that.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks for helping out as always. All right, back to you, Christine.
I would just like to repeat what Bob said. We have a really wonderful editor for region three. I would just like to uh repeat what Bob said. We have a really wonderful editor for region three um column in the blue beret, Susan Poole. And there is a very nice article that she has written. It will either be in March or April. I'm not sure, explaining the different types of apps and how you can utilize them. The other way, nice way to think about the WhatsApp is if heaven forbid somebody's pet would escape. Um, you can immediately put it out. I believe there was a cat that escaped recently at an event. Um, when we were down in Florida, somebody put it out, hey, my cat got out. Can you look for it? Um, it's just a nice way of also communicating instantly if heaven forbid a, a pet would escape. And speaking of region three, our rally is coming up the twenty-ninth through April second. It's going to be at Ocean Lakes in Myrtle Beach. We currently have a hundred and eighty-eight rigs registered, um of which seventy-three of those are first-time attendees. And so we're very excited. It's three days uh packed with lots of seminars. We are very seminar-heavy. Uh, some great food uh featuring one night for part of the meal, chicken bog. I'm not sure. I'd never heard of that, but it's a regional specialty. Um, and so we're really looking forward to a great time. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. All right, region four.
Hello, everybody. Um, I just want to remind you, for those of you coming to the May meeting in Jackson Center, that following week is the region four rally in Kalamazoo, Michigan, and from Jackson Center to Kalamazoo, Michigan, it's only three hours and twenty minutes. So it's very accessible if you have your trailer and want to come. We would invite you and like you to be there. Also, this year um uh is the sixtieth Swiss Festival National Rally in September twenty-third through October first. We're excited to do that, uh be the sponsors for the sixtieth year. And uh Fred Keel has had some discussions on doing some special things and we'll um look forward to people coming to there. And uh Millie uh earlier on in our meeting talked about being at um an Airstream dealer and talking things up. I just like to piggyback up on that. Um, Nova, which is Northern Ohio Virtual Airstream, has for the last eight years have had a, what they call Share the Dream Rally at Hades Sea uh Airstream, which is now Mark Wahlberg in Columbus. Uh, what, what, what Mark Wahlberg does for us is they move all the trailers around in their lots so they could fit us in there and we camp for a long weekend. And as people come and they talk to us and we share what we love about Airstream and um Hades Sea and Mark Wahlberg uh has been very generous and doing things like uh doing a barbecue for us. They give us a key to the showroom. So at night we have full reign of the showroom to do our evening activities and things like that. So consider doing that. It's a lot of fun. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you very much. Hang tight there. Oh, you guys have sixty-five degree weather there at Jackson Center, don't you? Or in Ohio right now, don't you? Yeah, yeah.
Seventy-two today was a high.
Oh, my gosh, you're killing me, man. All right, region five, Artie, are you there somewhere? I can't see just right now. Artie.
Yeah, I'm here.
There you are.
Okay, here we go. Um, well, first off, our um region five rally in September will be held at the Kentucky Horse Park. At the Kentucky Horse Park Campground. Um, we have seventy-five sites held there, so we're looking forward to a big turnout. Uh, next up, um, in conjunction with the Solar Eclipse Rally, we're currently in the process of setting up um, an event for that, which will be at Sierra Land in Columbus, Indiana. That's not very far from Jackson Center and I'm interested to hear what the Airstream, Airstream Inc. is actually going to be doing for that as well. I don't know if we'll be in competition or not. Um, but at any event, we're going to have a Saturday through Tuesday event for the Solar Eclipse at Sierra Lands. And we'll be getting that information out to the region. So if anybody's close by and wants to stop by and see region five for the Solar Eclipse, we'll be doing that next year. Um, that's about all I have uh for region five today.
That's fantastic, Artie. I've asked Kate Coast, E R, to just sort of keep a, a summary of where all the events are. We got some great events going on for the Solar Eclipse in Texas and you know, and obviously region four has got something. I didn't know you had something also. So she's going to try to keep a list together. She's going to publish something on the website that says, hey, you know, ACI members, you want to go to Solar Eclipse, here's a bunch of events that are happening along that swath. So um, so thank you for taking to making that happen. That's going to be fantastic.
Okay, thank you.
There you are, Larry. Uh, you're muted, Larry.
Sorry about that. Uh, region six is doing real well. Uh, there's a lot of enthusiasm with older and newer members in the, in the region and the different clubs. Really, I was going to try to list them all, but to be fair and honest, if you go to the region six webpage, it'd be the best thing to do. I've got it held up here, but I'd take too much of your time reading them. I will refer to the region six rally that Jan's been working on really hard. Um, she's got a good group of folks supporting her and helping her, and I think it's going to probably be a a premier rally, uh region rally from the past few years. She's really worked very hard on that. Uh, we also have a Solar Eclipse Rally coming up, but I believe it's going to be a national event rally. Uh, Mark McGee is working really hard uh in that direction and we're right in the middle of totality. So weather permitting, it ought to be a wonderful thing. Sweet. Some time ago, just off the, the beaten path here, I volunteered to write an article in reference to pet etiquette at rallies and caravans. And I got a tremendous amount of input and feedback. Um, and it took me a while to put it together. Uh, it's a, it's a pretty emotional issue for people. Uh, myself included because we had a sweet little girl with us for years. Uh, I've just recently finished it and sent it to Lori and I think she's uh happy with it. So I'm sure it'll be published in the near future, but it was a challenge to write because um I don't want to insult anybody. I don't want to hurt his feelings. At the same time, as pet owners, we have to be responsible and consider those who uh don't share the same love of pets as we do. So uh hopefully that'll be up in the next couple of months in the blue beret and uh kind of give some guidelines for how to work with that. But other than that, region six is doing real well. Uh, I have one club that's going through a little bit of growing pains that I've been working with for a couple of months. It's not really insurmountable issues. It's just some personality issues and business issues, but we're working hard to resolve that. And um, that's where I'm at. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Larry. All right, region seven.
Hi, um, like other northern regions, we are in the middle of uh winter still. We just got at least a foot of snow uh since last night. And more still coming. So we're, we're at least two months, three months from seventy-degree weather. But um even though we're not getting together with our Airstreams, we are getting together uh for meals. And Joe and I just went to Wisconsin Dell's this last weekend for the Wisconsin U P Valentine's Luncheon. And three of the couples that were there, this was their very first Airstream event. So it was really fun to meet some new faces and we were at the Grateful Shed, so which is an indoor um, has food trucks inside. And one of them was an Airstream. That's usually the ice cream uh restaurant, but it was completely gutted. So there was no ice cream. But um our region rally also isn't until September, so I've got lots of time to still plan and, and add things in. Um, it's going to be in Spring Green, Wisconsin. And uh which if you're a Frank Lloyd Wright fan, that's uh, a good place to be with Taliesin East there. So um anyway, that's about all that's going on. We're anxious to get started with rallies beginning the first week of May. So.
Thanks, Ginger. All right, region eight.
Yeah, and region eight, our region rally is uh the last week of April in Sebaya, Kansas. And it looks like we're going to have sixty to seventy rigs, which is good attendance uh for our region. And the really exciting news, the new energy between Airstream Inc. and the club has caused our local Airstream dealer and uh outside of St. Louis to participate. He's going to bring some staff, a couple trailers, and uh they're also gonna teach a backup class for beginners hands-on. And uh so members are really excited about that. Uh, they haven't really participated in a region rally for, since before I joined, so quite a long while. Very exciting. We also have members collecting uh a list of things to do around Sedalia, Missouri. So we'll be giving that to Lori and the team here in the next month or two. And uh get some local input on things that might be good for the twenty twenty-four rally, international rally. That's what's going on in region eight. Lot of energy. Be happy, be happy.
Thanks, Greg. Greg, okay, region nine.
Uh, hi, uh, we've got a couple of things to celebrate. We just finished with our streaming on the strand in Galveston and it was another success. This was our first year to be a national event rally. We had seventy-one rigs and oh gosh, uh probably about a hundred and forty people. So um, I sure would have appreciated that WhatsApp um uh opportunity and I will be investigating that. That, that sounds wonderful. We are uh in our review process with our surveys from them uh the participants and then we will meet and do a debrief with our Yaga Entertainment uh company that, that helps sponsor the event. So uh we had a good time and next year it will be a lottery system. Uh, the other thing is I want to celebrate is uh our first VP, Tracy Elkins, had a great idea to hold uh quarterly Zoom meetings with our presidents. Um, and we made that happen and had uh our first one uh a couple, oh, two weeks ago. And uh why it's a celebration is every single one of them, all ten of them were there. And I believe uh that's a big victory for me. And we uh kind of got on the same page. We helped each other. We elevated each other. We went over expectations um uh for leadership and it was marvelous to watch how the local presidents begin uh almost immediately sharing and um and mentoring uh those presidents that really uh uh were on the learning curve. So I thank Tracy for that and we hope to continue that. It turned out very well. And we are about to have our region nine uh rally in Gonzalez, Texas, which uh some call the birthplace of Texas. It's where the cannon come and take it, that whole lingo for Texas started. Um, and uh we uh uh put uh sent Santa Ana running. So Gon- Gonzalez is a wonderful place. And uh we'll be exploring the history and the culture, getting back to the economy, of course. But what is cause for celebration is uh we are up uh to about a hundred and five rigs participating. We're not quite where Christine is at a hundred and eighty-eight. I don't even know if I could find a place that would house a hundred and eighty-eight, but we are very pleased. What we did is ask our local uh clubs to please consider this as their March rally. And uh that, of course, uh helped bring uh a lot of us together for this event at the end of March. Uh, so um, good things happening here and uh it's really nice to see everyone. Appreciate the moment to say hello. Thank you.
Thanks, Anne. So I'm sure you guys will get some photos of the Galveston um uh out to uh someone, be it the Blue Beret or someone. Those are amazing photos. You want to see some club members dressed up. Oh, my gosh. I don't know where y'all got that stuff. So there's a lot of bling and a lot of flashing going on. So it's great. All right, uh, region ten.
Region ten, Kathy Giesi. Uh, like Terry Warren, I woke up to what we affectionately call Cascade Concrete this morning, which is a mix of snow and ice. So I've kept my fingers crossed my internet stayed up, but it did. Um, some big news that's happening for us that I think is really good. We have a wonderful webmaster for region ten, Carolyn Beardshire. Uh, she's getting the microsites updated, getting even the smaller clubs in our region to get their events up and on and some current pictures that really are reflecting that we are an active, forward-thinking region and um it's doing really good. We tend to camp year-round in the coastal part of um my region. But that right now with all the snow is probably not happening so much. Uh, big news in our region is uh, and I like to say my talent is recognizing competency in other people. And I uh found a couple who have extensive uh experience with caravans. They have taken on the role of region ten caravan uh chairs. They are doing just a bang-up job. I think we're going to bring in ten um caravans into Rock Springs and we're uh working on the logistics with all of that. We've got training set up. It's going to be caravan light uh because it's not going to be as extensive as other uh uh caravans have to be. Um, also, Mark, I'm going to mispronounce the name badly as he did mine, Crowe, Crowe, whatever. Um, and I are talking about doing a grapes green event in Willamette Valley, which is a very famous um uh wine region in Oregon. And we uh actually have a lot of French wineries that are coming over and buying up wineries. And I just saw your internet connection is unstable. I'm out. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Kathy. All right, uh, region eleven.
Oh, it's Stephen Parr and I got a couple of things to bring up. Um, let me find my notes here. Okay, here in the adventure in the west region, our rally scheduled January through April twenty-twenty-three. The region six clubs and units have already had three rallies since New Year's Day and already scheduled nine rallies in the March-April timeframe. For the sixty-sixth International Rally, the update for our region, currently we have a hundred and sixty-seven BRNs or three hundred and four plus club members signed up for full hookups and we're not sure right now about who signed up for Boondocky. Um, the region eleven breakfast uh currently has a hundred plus uh sign-ups and we're adding more members daily. We're going to have a mini-region rally, meet and greet, potluck, happy hour at the International Rally on June twenty-ninth from five PM to eight PM with our special guests and technical folks from We Are Airstream Chandler and We Are Airstream Santa Barbara. And then I have something that uh some club members have brought up and maybe that you all out there might have some suggestions. Um, the region club units would like Airstream Club website to have a region-wide rally calendar option searchable by month to avoid club unit rally scheduling conflicts. And this is kind of particular maybe to our region because we have Four Corners unit, which encompasses four states. And they have rallies in all four states. And then we have New Mexico, Airstream, Utah. The only one that doesn't really affect here is Wyoming and they're kind of frozen out right now anyways because it's so cold up there. But some way maybe a shift click on the unit club uh pull-down menu uh on our rally schedules that we have on the website. So that's kind of what they wanted me to bring up. So that's uh the thoughts for the region.
Thanks, Steven. Uh. Okay, uh, region twelve.
I like how you had to think about that. Oh, region twelve.
Always careful with region twelve.
Well, we continue to trickle on. Um, we have our region uh rally uh scheduled for Pismo Beach in October. We have uh currently about a hundred and forty some odd uh sign up, but we have a hundred and fifty. Um, and I'm trying to get another additional uh number of sites. So hopefully we can get up to the hundred and sixty because we do have that many people on the waiting list. So we're pretty excited about that. Um, we're looking forward to the following year because our region rallies are normally held in October. Um, so we're looking to maybe take the opportunity of, of uh doing our rallies of further east and um do it right before the International Rally um in Sedalia. And that way people going to Sedalia can kind of continue on. And also I believe the balloon fiesta. So, so there's a couple of options we're working at. Um, something that I always forget to mention is uh California uh well, region twelve hosts a um a national event, the Rose Parade Rally and Tom Smithson, you know, you can, you can maybe give more history on this. This, this, this is a rally. It's a, it should be on everybody's bucket list. And actually, Eric and I have not attended yet. We're, we're you know, it's, it's, it sells out every year. It is phenomenal. Um, and it, it just trucks along. Um, Margaret Hanshuum chaired it uh and is going to continue to chair it. She does a phenomenal job. She is mind-boggling. Uh, she's the one that does most of our logos. Uh, she is just out there busy, busy, busy. Um, so this is uh she, when she runs this rally, it, it was great. So um wanted to uh send some kudos out to her. Um, and also I'm not sure if our Cali rally is a national event, but uh that and also I'm not sure if our Cali Rally is a national event, but, uh, that goes on again next year. We, we, uh, do this every other year and that is, um, also, uh, planned for next April, I believe. So, um, so in theory we might have two, uh, national events, um, on our calendar and hopefully, um, we can come up with more. But that's it.
Thanks, Lauren. Okay, I don't see, uh, two yet. Okay, so we're going to go into, to closed session right now and anyone who isn't on the I B T, please sign off. Lori will also help you sign off as well. And we'll have just a brief discussion on a personnel, personnel-related topic. So.